I'd like to call the December 6th Select Board meeting to order at 6:32 PM. And review any changes to the agenda.
Can we put the budget past, just a second, past 9 and 10? I think I got that right. And do all that stuff real quick and get into the budget after that.
You want to move old business?
I want to move new business and old business.
You want to put A after old business, okay.
Yeah, I think that would be pretty prudent.
Does anybody have any? Just remind me when I stop my, don't do that later on.
We did all that stuff that way.
Alright, so you will move budget planning until after old business. I'd like to add 5A. Leanne Parker is going to come in tonight to talk about the meeting house briefly. I can also change my spelling of appropriation under 8C. I corrected it on my sheet. And 9A, I originally put down Brookline Meeting House. It should say Brookline Round Schoolhouse donation of $500.
Oh, really?
Yes. Those are my changes. The other? Seeing none, we'll move on to take a look. Oh, another thing is I'd like to table 3B till the next meeting. Didn't get typed up. Which is the special budget meeting from November 21st. So we're going to table that. Other than that, I'll entertain a motion. Now we're going to take a look at approving the minutes from the last four meeting held on November 15.
Look pretty good, eh?
We do, no, it just, Gwen pointed out that I did misspell Sigrid Fauze's name. Although I will say it was consistent with how we did it in previous minutes.
Probably.
Because I don't think I did.
They read last night.
No, it was November 20th. These are mine. You're off the hook. You can go back to documenting all the appropriation work.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes from November 15th when someone is ready.
We approve the minutes of November 15th?
With that correction.
With the corrections indicated.
Second. Second advice, Chris, any discussion? Hearing none. All those inherent approving the minutes from November 15th with spelling correction. Sign if they say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, very good.
Good job, please.
Yes. Alright, scheduled members of the public, Barbara Moore. Want to talk a little bit about any Susan Hill.
So we're here to advocate for our hearing. Our draft town plan hearing is next week, next Wednesday. And there was one section in the plan that we're here to advocate for stronger language in that based on the survey results and prior town plan, the prior town plan survey results, as well as the goals that we have written here of our town plan. So at our last meeting, we went through and changed all of the "shoulds" in the town plan to "shall," which holds a lot more weight in an Act 250 proceeding, a "shall" or a "must." And so that went along until we got to land use. And then we couldn't agree on whether it should be a "should" or a "shall." And it was in the paragraph on page 60 of the town plan, proposed town plan. It would be the second paragraph under, it starts with "commercial and light industrial uses may be appropriate, however, uses other than residential should be carefully controlled to prevent adverse impacts such as noise, light, and heavy traffic from affecting adjacent properties."
Okay.
So that's the "should."
Wait, second paragraph, wait, page 60, second paragraph? It's like a majority of residential areas developed, is that?
No. So it is, well, maybe it's a different page number on yours, let's see.
There's a new picture, I see you put a picture on there.
Well, I don't have it on that page.
Oh, alright.
It's the page after the...
It says Roman numeral eight, land use plan, existing land use A. And then B is future use land use.
Okay, okay, B, it would be under future land use.
Alright, so page 61.
So it might be 61 in your...
Yeah, "commercial and light industrial uses may be appropriate," is that what you said? Okay, alright, so it's...
So the next sentence starts with "however, uses other than residential should be carefully controlled." And we wanted to make that "shall be carefully controlled." I mean, I shouldn't say "we."
That's a change, "should" to "shall."
Yes, so I'm advocating for a change there based on the survey results. And I can point to a few of the pages that are...
Have a reading.
Like a table on page seven of the town plan that talks about commercial, industrial...
But you're saying basically you have changed all of the "shoulds" to "shall" and accept that this one still says "should."
Right, because we couldn't agree.
The other ones you agreed to.
The other ones we agreed. We couldn't agree on that. And so it was decided that we volley it to the select board to make a decision on that.
There's another "should" in, did you realize there's another "should" in here, right above it? The town center. Was that changed? Paragraph above it. That starts, the town center should be maintained. Two "shoulds" here and here, so those were changed in yours originally.
The town center shall be maintained as that of a rural community.
Yeah.
This one says "shall."
So you've changed all of them up to this point? This might have been an old copy, that was cut out. You have updated and changed a couple of those that were asking to change. Asking us to consider.
Yeah, I had been looking at it because I was considering going to the next meeting and making the same comment, but I had noticed that it was not changed. And I think it "shall" be changed.
Which one was that, Chris?
This one.
The one that I'm talking about?
The one you're reading, yeah. I was looking at it the other night.
So that would come up in the hearing? Or do you want it, something the selector would do before the hearing so that the hearing has the accurate language?
What do you think there, Suzanne?
The hearing...
The hearing's already been...
Yeah, the hearing, that's what the hearing's for.
Shall be, that, it should be changed at the hearing, I think.
And then the select board will review what the hearing finds and then decide yea or nay.
Right.
Right, but there, I'm sure at our hearing, there will be other changes made. But if you could come to the hearing with, you know, something in mind. Yeah, and that was based on also, you know, on the tables. There's a table on page seven that talks about commercial, industrial. It was a question on the survey. So it says in Brookline, there should be more industrial and commercial development. And 62.9% of the respondents disagreed with that. And then there's also the next page. Okay, not the next page. So then in Brookline, there should be more regulation of, this is on page nine. 57.1% agreed there should be more regulation of industrial, commercial ventures and noise. And I'm only putting those two together because oftentimes the two, one, commercial, industrial, can be noisy. So there's that. There's also the goal, one of the goals of our town plan, which is on page three, I believe. So on page three, under D, goals of the town plan, number seven says, "to limit development that would significantly change the character of the community and/or adversely affect neighboring properties." So it seems like if that's our goal, then I feel like the language back in the land use should reflect that goal. And we've also been told twice in two previous reviews by Wyndham Regional that, you know, our language is weak. And as well as the article from 2010 that, from Wyndham Regional also, that states our weak language doesn't hold up in Act 250 here.
I think we already agrees with that.
Yeah, okay. So that being said, I just wanted to point out the pages that were identified in the town plan from the folks who responded, you know, what they do and don't want to see.
I think they did a really nice job in going through everything. I know the committee spent many hours and spent a lot of time doing all the research. So next week. What else? I know we, I put it in the newspaper. Is there any other way that we can, I guess the list serve? Do you do the list serve with Julie to write out? Maybe we need to put the sandwich board out for the hearing.
That would be a good idea, yeah. Do you do that now?
No.
No? Oh, at the other end of town.
I'm not allowed to do that.
Sandwich board for the hearing.
Yeah, if you fix it up and put the wording there, I'll put it out there for you.
Okay, so, yeah. So do you want me to get hold of Julie?
Yeah, I mean, I'd be glad to do it.
So Suzanne, did you want to say anything?
Have you noticed, was it placed on the calendar, the Brown Borough Reformer calendar? I'm going to check because I think I wrote to them and asked them to put it on Wednesday count. Maybe it won't show up yet because they only do it a week.
I don't get the reformers, I don't know. I think the, the reformer put the warning in and that is 30 days from next week.
Alright, good. Questions? What time is the meeting next week?
Seven o'clock.
7:00 PM. No, it would have been had six. And Bruce, you're cooking?
You don't want me cooking?
Alright, 7:00 PM on December 13. Is that, that's going to be videotaped? Does it need to take minutes for that meeting or how does that work?
It's a regular meeting. It's the planning board regular meeting. And then part of that meeting is going to be the review of the town plan. So that's part of the planning board's normal meeting.
Okay. And you're going to videotape it as well?
I'm sorry, what?
Will you be videotaping it as well?
I can if you want me to.
I don't know.
I mean, I basically do the select board meetings, but if you think it's important that we tape that move, that...
No, I think that would be okay. Unless you prefer to be videotaped. Alright, that's fine. Alright, well, thank you very much. Anything else that we can help you with and getting ready for that? Alright, then we can move on to unscheduled members of the public. And I put Leanne Parker there. She's here to talk a little bit about the meeting house. I had just posted the minutes and then I got Barbara's and then I reposted them and then I got your notes. So that's why I put you on the schedule.
Or the crazy or something, you're not going to repost them again?
No.
There were three things that I wanted to accomplish today was to get the tickets, the raffle tickets. I think we had committed to the public that had filled out and given money for the quilt raffle. That the tickets and the names and stuff were put in the safe here. And we were going to, we told folks that we would be drawing after the 30th of November. So I thought that was on the plan for doing that tonight.
I didn't see it on the agenda, I didn't.
Okay. We could do it another night. I mean, but I think we ought to do it soon just to let people know. And then I kind of wanted to talk. I'm happy to notify whoever it is that has won the quilt and to get it to them.
How about, if it was supposed to be done the first week, shouldn't it?
Well, it was dated December 1st, but I guess there was some changes. But there's no reason why you can't as a person ask the select board to select a winner this evening out of the bowl, but is it already?
I'd be glad to draw it out if you wanted to go get the tickets.
I don't know if they're all folded up. There were a whole bunch of them that weren't folded up or...
I can look at that and...
Yeah, if you want to take a few minutes and get it all ready, then we can do the draw maybe in 10 to 15 minutes.
Sure, be happy to do that.
Yeah.
And then the, I was also, because there's just a few of us on the committee right now and there's a, there's kind of a log jam of things such as totes and cups and minutes from years past. I wondered if it'd be possible, at one point we were looking at storing those things here instead of in a much more temporary place at the meeting house. I was wondering if you could talk about at some point, giving us a section of a closet just to put, you know, probably wouldn't take up much space. But I'd love to have those here where I think that they'll be much better taken care of and protected.
Is it documents or?
Yeah, it's like old minutes and, you know, history and then there's...
Is that the ones that we originally had here that you took?
I guess that Peter might have taken. I didn't remove anything, but Peter's, I think they're down there now. I mean, it goes all the way back to the Ladies Benevolent Society and their notebook of what their minutes were and things such as that. Last time I saw them, Peter had put them up at the, in the meeting house. So I'd like to protect those.
Right, I just, we're, we're cramped for space in a vault, but you know, there's...
Oh, I don't care. I mean, we were looking, Samara looked into this closet and she thought things could be rearranged.
Well, that's going to be a media closet, so that's, I have plans for that. But you know, we can still find a place. And I guess what I would like to see is how important they are because if they're really important, then they need to be probably in our vault. And if we have room for them, you know, I'll figure out something.
Do you want me to bring them down here or how do you want me to proceed with that?
You can see what they are, you can bring them over and put them on a table.
Okay.
Alright, I can do that.
And then what, ones that we need to really preserve should go in the vault.
Right, otherwise it would just be some mugs and some totes and things like that and some, you know, some pub mugs, some posters and such like that that we've used in the past that might be able to reuse. I don't know if they're not that good, we can always make up new ones. We do have now a sign that's down there so that we can put the sign out with all the messages on it, so. And you ought to know about that too, that there's another board down there that we have in case it's ever needed.
The one with the zero on it? The one that says zero?
No, it's a black sandwich board.
No, it's a black sandwich board.
Right, but not the big one that Peter made?
Oh, okay.
You check off. Yeah, this is a sandwich board. Just like the one you have, except it's a different color.
So we can, well, we could put that downstairs. Downstairs, dry.
I don't mind keeping it there because there might be open house and things like that. I just wanted to make you aware of it.
Oh, okay.
That was something that Helen donated. She bought it and donated it to the committee, so we're to the preservation. And then third, we're, I'm working with Samara to finish up some responsibilities for the grant that we got. So to pull all the pictures together, to, you know, complete the things that need to be completed accounting wise and stuff like that. So I'm happy to take responsibility for that, just so you know.
I saw the email exchange, it's great.
Alright. So those were the three things that I have on my list. And if you want to get those tickets out, I can go through and...
Yeah, I'll get them for you.
Okay.
Alright, so storage, we'll see how this...
I just have one last question. You're down to two committee members now?
That's right.
It's you and Mark?
No, well, Mark's on the committee. He hasn't been to too many of the meetings. So it's basically me and Carrie.
Okay.
So we, oh, and I did, Chris, I did just email you something for the planning board. I did print it off and it's easier for you to look at paper if you do that. Just let me know if you want it left out a little bit more or, you know, more detail or less detail.
I guess what I was getting at is that you need a quorum to make decisions on a committee and if you don't have the quorum...
Yeah, the way that I saw it in the kind of other discussions was it's really falling to the select board to take responsibility and I'm working for you guys. And, you know, as much as I can. I don't think any large projects are going to get done unless we get some more energy in there to work on. So, but I'm open to it. And in the letter that we're going to put in the town report, I've kind of brought everybody up to speed and said we're looking for folks and yada, yada. And some of the things that we'd like to do next year that the whole committee thought was important to do before things kind of got whittled down. So, you know, I'm still interested, but I want to be committee one or two.
I hear you.
And so hopefully we'll get some more interest.
That would be nice.
Thank you.
Do you want to get the tickets?
Yep, I will.
So is that storage that you're going to bring over, the signings that you have and the grant work that has to be taken over? Church looks nice, doesn't it look beautiful?
Yeah, I love being able to see those.
And it's so cool to know that Ballast Ridge is Scott, Old Scott Bridge. I think that's very cool.
It was great to see it on Facebook, too.
Yeah, well, did all those pictures get sent around?
I saw it on Facebook.
Yeah, they've been posted on Facebook, but we have a huge thumb drive of all the pictures. I tried to save them onto my computer and that type of thing. So, you know, they're all available. And I think it would be nice at town meeting to have it printed off so we can put it out for people to see what it looks like from above and that type of thing, so.
It also would be nice to, again, we might want to use one of those pictures in the town report.
Is it great?
Yeah.
So if you wanted to maybe, if you could just take cherry pick a couple of the best ones and send them to me.
You have the cover, yeah.
Yeah, the cover, yeah.
See you tomorrow.
Yeah, you can do it.
Get comfy, Archie, you can have it. You can have it comfy for a real tour.
Okay, and that's a good point there. Alright, so we're going down to updating for animal control. Just wanted to, the board know that Nancy Libby's been working very hard at the animal control efforts. We've had several particular problem cases in town and she has saved the town a lot of legal fees because she was able to convince someone to turn over a neglected animal to rescue versus having us fight to have the animal confiscated legally and such. So through five or six meetings, and I was there for a couple of them, and worked with the state police, she has saved the town quite a bit of money.
Is that the dog that she has now?
No, this is a horse. So it's a different thing, but the dog she has is something else, that's mountain. Yes, so I just want to say that that was an important, it was a big effort on her part. And I told her again, she has mileage, that's one of the things that she complained for, for mileage. And I know she's gone to some conferences on it and she takes it very seriously and we're very happy that she's...
Yeah, we're very lucky to have her doing that.
No, Nancy Libby is the animal control officer on her deputy.
L-I-B-E-Y?
L-I-B-E-Y, no E. Alright, so that was animal control. Alright, so we're going to just move, we already moved the agenda around a little bit before you got here. We're going to put the budgeting after old business, but since Guy is in there, if you don't mind, I'm going to put... New business, right? Number nine, which we, new business. Brookline Round Schoolhouse received a donation of $500 from the Mary Myers Company. Part of that donation was a, was a letter that said that they would like a timely response on how that money was going to be used. And if it's not going to be used, I guess they won't be continuing to donate because they're, whatever. So they, they conditioned a timely response for that to be made. Now, the Round Schoolhouse is under the auspices of the Historical Society and Historical Society has not done much of anything in the past two, three years. I have called Cynthia now twice and, last message is on her machine. I do remember that the last time the Round Schoolhouse was used this year by Roger Alvey, he told me that the building was very musty smelling, the book papers were all damp. And I know there's no electricity in there, but I would love to see a dehumidifier. I mean, there is power, it's on there. It's just going to be decaying now from inside out because of the moisture, so.
Is there power at the Round Schoolhouse?
At this time, there is no power turned on at the Round Schoolhouse, but I don't know if we can maybe ask the Historical Society to respond, to consider doing something, what they use to repair. There are some repairs that need to be done at the Round Schoolhouse. They never followed through on that $5,000 before, so now we're looking at $5,500. That's why I think it was a condition on the, on the donation.
They didn't know about the $5,000? I don't think.
Peter didn't know, he's been in the meeting.
Pardon? I don't know where it came from. Did it come from Peter Meyer?
It came from Mary Myers.
Yeah, so it could have been Walter, it could have been, it could have been Elaine, it could have been anyone.
What's that, the?
Donation.
The what?
The $500 donation to the Brookline Round Schoolhouse came with a stipulation from the...
Yeah, that was from Mr. Walter Meyer and Mary Myers Toy Company.
Right.
Have they historically given, I mean, if they made donations before or this is...
No, this was the first time I've seen it, but with his name on it.
They also made a donation to the fire department at the same church.
Well, I mean, maybe it makes sense to try to reach out to Doug Loewen for Jack Green.
Jack was new on the committee, but they never had their meetings.
I spoke to Doug a few times and I've mentioned the fact that, you know, there's a beam over there that needs to be replaced. And he seemed to think that he was going to get together, but Doug has been working for the postal service and leaving at 2:00 and 3:00 o'clock. And now he's the postmaster up at Bonneville, so he has more of a regular hour schedule, but that may change soon. But Doug is the only one that's any, that does any, anything that's active on that committee.
Can we, like, take this for the next meeting and come up to a decision? Meantime, maybe you're...
I need somebody on the board maybe to reach out to Doug and ask him about what they're doing on the Round Schoolhouse. So I don't want to table it, I'd like to have some action done on it. So is there anybody who would contact Doug and or Cynthia and or Jack Green or send out a letter in general, ask him for some action on it? We're talking to Samara to actually read the letter that came in with the check. We're talking to Samara to actually read the letter that came in with the check.
I'm, I'll reach out to Doug. I mean, I'll be honest, I'm not going to bother reaching out to Cynthia since I think there have been multiple attempts and there's been no response. If no, if no one has reached out to Doug to see if there's even something we know when we know the money can be used for...
I have no idea. It's, it's on the minutes in the website. It will show the last, the last meeting, the date will be there.
But it's, you know, it's like tearing...
Now you know where it's going to fall through the $5,000 bucks.
Whatever happened with that?
So she, she just told you that it came in?
Be done, be done. Be up, be up.
Yeah, yeah.
Nothing ever happened. Lisa Ryan said, when he's sitting there, just got to fill up here. The coordinator, Samara, said she was going to take control of it.
Might not get anything, but I...
She said, thank you.
I just don't want to table it.
Never had it.
All right, so we're going to move back up to summary updates and report. Guy, while you were out, we did, quickly did animal control and discussed 9A, Brookline Round Schoolhouse. So we'll go back to the town clerk report?
Yeah. Nothing really, I mean, things are going along as, as planned. Gwen is still doing the books, digitizing, she's at book, what, 28 now?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven. So, yeah. So each book, like I say, is 600, 650 pages, so she's really done a good job. And it's, it takes a while, but we're getting there. Other than that, things are going along in town as we hoped they would. Where the delinquent tax collector hat, I'm still hopefully waiting to hear from the bankruptcy court in regards to the one delinquency that we have. Hopefully that will be resolved before the end of the year. I'd like to have two years in a row where the town has no delinquent taxes at all. The town has been really good paying their taxes and it's, it makes life a lot easier for all involved, especially for you guys who have to appropriate different funds and so forth. If you don't have the money, you can't appropriate anything. Other than that, the holidays have a tendency to be a little slow in the office because people have pretty much got their end of the year stuff done now, but you never know. Now it's time to get reports generated before the town report and I have six or seven reports that I'm responsible for. Gwen has helped me do those. So we're moving right along. Everything's good.
There's a note here about the homestead rebate discussion, HS 122.
I didn't know if you wanted to do that separate or...
I was going to do it right here, have it on the agenda.
Oh, okay. I didn't know if that was one of the, the town clerk report. Anyway, at any rate, what happens is that each year, the state of Vermont requires the taxpayers who live in town to file, file homestead declaration. That used to be only once, when you moved there, and then if you moved out of town, you know, you didn't have to do it. But now it has to be done every year. So consequently, some people have gotten confused and they, the state says the town may assess a fee of 8% for penalty. A lot of the towns have waived that fee and basically it's, the onus is on the listeners. They're the ones who say, do they want to have that penalty or not have that penalty? Marcia passed the, I spoke with Marcia Lynch this afternoon and she said if I would speak for her, she would be really pleased with that. She's in agreement that we should waive the penalty because it's our feeling that the townspeople pay enough in taxes. This 8% penalty is just another slap in the face. The, the, the language for it is just on top of the bill on the homestead declaration page. It says the town may assess up to 8% penalty. So it is Marcia's opinion that we should waive that penalty and the select board has to say yea or nay.
This is not the same as a, a delinquent tax at all.
Has nothing to do with delinquent taxes. This is a penalty for a late filing of the homestead declaration.
I'll make a motion that we go along with...
That you waive the penalty?
Right, the penalty.
I have a motion on the floor. Can I have a second for that motion? Seconded by Chris. Any other discussion? Is that just for this year or is...
You should do it every year because the laws change. I don't know how long this has been. Last time we did it was Jan, July of 2013 where we had a number of residents who were confused and got penalized quite, quite deeply. So you waived that penalty and that, and I'm sure the residents appreciated that. But it's a very confusing thing. As a certified IRS tax preparer, I can tell you right now, there's just one little sentence on top of the form that said the town may assess a penalty. It's, it's just confusing.
So if they call to you and we straighten it out?
Yep. And some towns have, to be honest with you, out of the 251 towns, some towns have said, yeah, we're going to take that penalty because it takes us to do a little extra work to do revised tax bills. I feel that in our town, that's not necessary, but I'm only one person. It's the ultimate decision is with the select board. I can just tell you what the statute say, what you can do. And the statute is very clear, Title 32, Chapter 135, Subsection 5440, I'm sorry, 5410 says the select board can waive the penalty.
Hey, we have a motion and a second on the floor to waive the penalty for the late filing of the homestead rebate for this year.
Homestead, uh, homestead penalty.
Homestead penalty for this year. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The motion passed, 5 to 0. Thank you very much for bringing your attention. All right, we're going to go back to the quilt.
Whoa.
All right, so we're going to get us on...
Yeah, I want to...
Look at this.
Hold on a second.
Look at all the tickets.
Maybe someone could hold that open and...
The number that I put on that graph, there's a lot more than 147 tickets in here, so just so you know, that's why it's a graph.
Can I ask a quick question before we get to drawing? Are we...
Can you bring it up front here also so I can get a good shot of the...
Is there any possibility that there are some tickets that people sold that are still floating out there? Because I know it was unclear to me that's going to happen with them.
Yeah, there were several envelopes that were there in with the quilt. And then there was a separate jar with all sorts of other tickets crammed into it. So I think at this point, Peter's dropped everything off, Carrie's dropped off his, and there was a few...
It's fair to say that you have all the tickets.
And they would have all emanated from you guys, so presumably you...
Thank you.
Presumably there are none. Let's just...
So we need someone to draw a ticket from the select board.
All right.
Drum roll?
Deb Finer. That's great.
Who was it?
Deb Finer. And I have to say that there are many people that filled out like 30 tickets.
Really?
Just their, just one name, you know, so a lot of people forget it, many.
Congratulations.
F-I-N-E-R.
F-I-N-E-R.
I think it's F-E-I-N-E-R.
And she's a resident of what town? You can link it up.
Yeah.
Elbom Beetlejuice Road.
Fred Holmer. Okay, well, I will let her know.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you, man.
Thanks.
Leanne, are you going to take the quilt and everything with you now?
Um, I will take the quilt, but I think that I should leave, I don't know.
Yep, I'll put them in a bowl for now and see to decide what you want to do with them.
When I come back, let's do it.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're going to move down to Old Business, number 10. There's an open position on the Leland and Gray School Board. Lindell Bowle is interested in it. This is an elected position whose term expires in 2019. Since Lindell has offered, showed an interest in resuming an old position that she had before, we can vote on appointing her until town meeting and then vote for her to, if she's still interested, to fill the term until 2019. So I'd like to make a motion to appoint Lindell Bowle as the Leland and Gray School Board Director for the Town of Brookline.
That's second.
Seconded by Cruz. Any discussion?
Yes.
What's that?
She's asked me upon consummation of this to give WCSU a phone call tomorrow with the message she gets in her big paperwork, so this goes through, I'll take care of it.
Oh, you're going to take care of it? Wonderful, okay.
I have the number, phone number.
We have a, a motion and a second to appoint Lindell Bowle as the LNG School Board Rep for Brookline. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Thank Lindell very much for offering to hold that position again and Cruz, if you'll call Bill Anton and such. Thank you. Okay, so we also had an open position for Rescue Inc. Jordan Chapin is interested in the position. She has written through an email. It is an appointed, annual appointment position. And so I, we, I spoke with Lynn Clark and he was very happy to hear that someone was coming from Brookline and she does have some, has medical background, so that was also something he was interested in. I'd like to make a motion to appoint Jordan Chapin as the Brookline Representative to the Rescue Inc. Board. Can I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Chris. Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of appointing Jordan Chapin for the Rescue Position, Rescue Inc. Board Position, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so I, well, Jordan's on vacation right now, but I'll email her if the vote went through. Thank you again for people volunteering, that's important.
That's great.
Gwen, could you do me a favor and just put those names down on a piece of paper so I can change the website tomorrow morning?
Yep. And we can finish up with Old Business, See Sunny Day Care, Pre-Winter Project.
Ain't going to happen.
It's not going to happen.
I doubt it. It's going to get cold next week. I've been out straight since the 20th of October after about 12 or 13 parts of the wood. I'm exhausted. I don't, I don't have time to do it right now.
Mark, is there...
Yeah, I'm starting to cut down on some of the projects I've been doing, so I, I will find time to get the stuff off the roof and the air conditioning taken care of.
Okay, if we can do that that week.
The railing and stuff can be done this spring, Doc, but I don't...
But the air conditioning opening I was worried about.
Yeah, I'll, I'll do those same weekend.
All right, thank you very much. All right.
Mark, I'm happy to help you.
Okay.
So with the roof thing, you probably shouldn't try to do that by yourself.
All right, well, I'll, I'll get in touch with you and see if you're available.
Yeah.
It'd be probably a weekend since start by Friday.
Yeah, and which would be fine, I mean, I'm here every weekend till...
Yeah, I don't think that would take long.
No, no, thanks, Eric.
All right, so I'll let Tina know that we'll get that air conditioning opening closed up and some of the things off the roof.
As far as the railings and stuff that we talked about, it could be done this spring. It's too late now.
All right.
Sorry.
No, that's all right. It's insurance thing, you know?
Why?
Because we have it, it's insurance.
Then that would be forever.
Yeah, I know.
We'll get done.
Okay, so we are down, that's finished up, so we'll now move back up to highways and roads, current projects and plans, and then line, I can tell you the line committee, they're supposed to be doing that tonight.
Yes.
Did they not talk to you?
I talked to them a couple of times and they're supposed to call me around nine tonight and they're planning to donate tonight.
There's no traffic.
He asked if I could meet, show them the locations.
They can do it in freezing weather.
Down to 15 degrees.
That's what I'm trying to discuss, I think, over the degree.
And luckily the roads all got washed yesterday, so...
Yeah, that's true.
So they're doing it tonight?
They're doing it tonight after nine.
Okay. Hurry up, we don't want to yell.
They're going to do it, they're doing it in the dark?
Don't drive over the way.
Yeah, they, they asked if they, they figured the traffic will be less.
Oh, okay. No, I didn't even...
They prefer nighttime over daytime.
Oh, that's cool. Yeah.
And then any other current projects or plans before we get into budgeting you want to talk about?
Well, I do have, I've been doing a little bit of the grant work. I was doing some general maintenance on Ellen Warrow and at the same time, with grant work we applied for and got from Wyndham Regional, I, I've started to do some of that work and the rest will be completed before June, June 30th, I think it was. So, so we've got a good start on some of that. And, and my road checks on Parker Road, Interfire has installed their driveway pulver and it's still in progress, but it's, they're, they're, got some of it roughed out and it looks like the, the angle of the driveway and the, and the town road need a little bit of adjustment, but it looks like it's probably going to come together. I know our, our weather's about to tighten up, so not sure how much they'll get accomplished from here on out, but I guess it's weather permitting. We also, in the mail, I was thinking, there should be an estimate that came from Carrie Tree Service?
Yes, there is.
And I haven't had a chance to review, so I don't know if you want to open that now or later to see if his numbers are in compliance with the work and our purchase quality and...
The notice was received on December 2nd. Well, what's here is their qualifications and references.
There was something...
Oh, here.
Yep.
A custom trigger loan pruning package, not to exceed $7,200.
Yep.
Want to take a look at it? So it is, and then they included their contracts, certificates, liability, insurance and such, but this is what you're, this is what you're asking for. Take a look at that. Deb Finer. F-I-N-E-R.
She bought the ticket. It's important that we get credit for having sold the way we like to lottery. We get winners.
We're going to put up a big sign tomorrow.
Oh, we have a winner. Yeah, we have a winner there.
So we sold. Cool.
Excellent. Put on the Facebook page.
I probably am. I swear to you. I'm going to fill that one, like, 20 of them.
What's that?
We should go forward with that.
That's it.
This doesn't, this is...
It's just the, the project, and then we'll go to budget.
Yeah.
Those are mine, there's your...
That's me. That's me.
Yeah, because I...
Yes.
That's us. That's the, it's the...
Oh, yeah.
They contain, okay. Yes, they, he said they, it doesn't say should be counted. Excellent, thank you for following up on that, Guy. Yes, there's one more.
That's a good.
That's done.
Yeah, because I.
It's the, it's the.
Oh, yeah.
They made time to.
They contain, okay. Yes, they, he said maybe it doesn't say should be counted. Excellent. Thank you for following up on that guy. Yes, there's one more.
Okay, well, I had talked to everybody personally and showed it in the trees and there's approximately 65 trees along Hill Road and grassy brook that I described. Some were called in, you know, early and some were just ones that I've noticed. Some were trees that I've asked Green Mountain Power's tree guys to take care of, but they, because they're just outside of the 10-foot, right away, they maintain, they wouldn't do. So this guy has looked at all the trees and it's $225 an hour with a 60-foot bucket truck and three arborists, which includes a climber, bucket operator, chip truck, chipper, a track skid steer, tractor, dump trailer, including all the tools. So he feels he can do this 65-tree job for $7,200. Or not to exceed $7,200. He did say if it were less, he would give down the rate. So he can get put a, you know, if the town is in agreement, I guess he has his insurance certificate and a contract. So if the board feels this is something they'd like to try, you know, it's under the purchase policy, but it's close, so I don't know how the board feels whether they want to try.
He's gonna leave the wood for a while.
Yeah, the agreement that I talked about with him would be to chip up everything up to like four inches and then leave the wood at the base off the town right away for the landowner. And some of the landowners that I already spoke with asked if the wood could be left. They knew somebody who would pick it up. They didn't want it personally, but they didn't want it. They wanted to clean it up and knew that a neighbor would take it, so.
So is it all elm?
A majority of it is elm. There are some ash and some, I believe some oak and white birch, maple. But yeah, majority of the hazard trees that got us to this point are the dying elms that are around there.
Did I miss where we're paying for this? Where's this coming from?
Well, I believe that we don't have a specific, well, we did start saving a couple of years back. We had some dead tree removal and we haven't done it for, other than what I cut, which is more of emergency unless, if it's something I can do. If it's not, then we call the power company. And we started to save, I think it was $600 a year just for tree removal, but sometimes one tree is $600 or more or less. So if we were to do this, I believe it would fall under general contract services on our budget. And so it's not specified, but the trees are, you know, each time the wind blows, the rain, hard rains, pieces are coming down. So it's something that should be done.
The general contract services in the road, how does the road budget? Or is it? Yes?
Yeah, assume we're talking.
Yeah, yeah, some of your highway contract services.
And some, I missed, some of the wood's gonna be left based on whether the landowner wants it or not?
Rather than just leave a mess, they will clean up all the brush. And I've asked, you know, if anything is a firewood size to leave. And for the landowners, because it's the landowner's wood. And, you know, if the landowner doesn't want it, it's equal who will pick it up, you know?
Oh, yeah.
A lot of times it disappears. A lot of times it disappears before the landowner gets a chance at it.
Well, we're not gonna do that. I thought I got a fucking board. I agree.
Is this something?
Bruce is not that quick.
You need to vote on?
Yes, I am.
Because if.
I did that in court, he was, I almost got.
It's essential now for me, I feel that the board should make the decision whether they would like to.
When are they gonna do it? When are they gonna do it? Did you already say that?
I don't know. I feel that he would fit it in ASAP. I know he's busy, he's guy, but I think he realizes that they're hazard trees and would take great care of them immediately.
So I'm gonna make a motion to approve the expenditure of not more than $7,200 for roadside tree removal, hazardous tree removal by Henry Carr Arborists. Have a second.
Second.
Second, if I dated any other discussion?
Mark, one question, so, and apologies, maybe you explain this at the beginning or maybe you explain this at the last meeting, but are some amount of these trees, trees that Green Mountain Power might have removed if their crew was available?
Well, I had asked them, and they did, after talking with this guy, and he confirmed that the reason they didn't take a lot of the ones that they left behind were because they were more than 10 feet out from the wires. And he told me that he would take care of any of those. There's, there is still some specific trees that he feels the power company is liable to take down. So I'm gonna ask again if they will come to town and take care of the ones that are definitely power line responsible.
All right, because I just couldn't remember whether any of these might have been ones that they were before they got pulled away the last time when they were here with the weather. Was there any chance of some of these we could maybe get Green Mountain Power to do if we could get them to come back?
Right. No, I believe they will come back and there is a couple of trees that part of the tree broke and they came back after they left, like came in specifically. I hope they fixed a wire at the same time before the power company. But they did remove the trees that were in that 10 feet either side of the power line. And this guy qualified to work, you know, along next to the power line and he said that he certified to not take anything 10 feet.
Oh, okay.
So, so he pointed out to me the ones that told me to keep them.
All right, thank you. We have a motion, a second. Any other discussion? Hearing that, all those in favor of approving the, not to spend no more than $7,200 on tree removal by Carr Arborists? Signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Mark.
So I will tell him and tell him that he was already.
Sign that tonight?
Yeah, you have to sign it on form.
Did you want us to sign the contract?
Yeah.
All right, put that back.
I'll give this back and have you, maybe they want to read through it.
All right, we'll put it in the beginning, because we're waiting to pass it on, leave Any other current projects that you want to talk about before we get into budget?
Yeah, I got halfway through my, there's a RFP for the watch over. The sand and salt shit, after getting into it, I realized it was a little more complex than this one was. I'll get back further than that until next time, but this is, this is a draft. The dates I put in were, I think it was the 5th, was it, January? The site meeting and the date we do the 17th?
The 5th and the 17th.
Now, I assume that's, it's gonna be your holiday meetings, guys, will be gonna change. No, it's 17th. Cold January night, probably.
So it's okay if we put a condensed ad in the reformer?
Do you want me to condense it and send it to you?
Yeah, and then, then he can post the, yeah, then he can, guy can post it. Put the whole thing there.
Right, so.
I'll pass this one, I'll take a look at the article.
This time, we've given ourselves three weeks, I think, before the January 5th. Usually we're within minutes of the deadline, but I think we've given ourselves plenty of time this time.
It's.
Well, we do have the holidays coming up too, so.
This is the Stankowitz's box, Culver.
Right, by Stank.
Which now is owned by, that area, new home is owned by.
Yeah, the people, I've forgotten their name, to be honest with you.
Right, I know.
Okay, so 9:00 AM site visit on the 5th and then the 17th is the bid, open bids.
I need to talk to them and Gene Cerro again about, I think, a temporary, like a construction easement. Some work will have to be done outside the right way, but not, not any part of the structure should be outside the right way. It's what Stanley referred to as a construction easement, which is maybe 10 feet outside, but that plus it's had to be restored. It's in present condition or better.
So you'll.
So I need to talk to them about that and, I don't know, I may write up an agreement or something and just have them sign it. Or you, you want to write something, whatever. But I should do that before the 5th is my point, so that if something comes up, I can assume that anybody's okay with that.
Yeah, if you want to give me a couple of terms, I can put together the agreement together for you. I just knew basically what you were talking to Gene about. All right, we'll talk between now and next week.
Well, one of the things is that we have not received any sand yet.
Oh, wait.
I heard you didn't send the letter. I heard you put this on the letter, that Mark got it.
No, I did.
I saw what you called it, that was related to that.
I don't think Mark saw the letter.
No, I.
I mailed it Tuesday.
I also emailed it and Mr. Fitzpatrick left a voicemail message at my house this morning at 10:00 AM when I was out, and he said that he has made a delivery. So it must have been today.
Okay.
Or yesterday. But he sent out my e-mail that he has made a delivery.
Okay, I was unaware and.
Well, I went up tonight and he's delivered about seven yards.
So he made it, wasn't lying.
We need like 200. So it's been seven weeks, he's delivered 70 yards. That's about, about a yard a week.
I sent out, I'll share it with the board. I sent out this letter and.
200, do you need? Not in the R2?
Suggested, this is the letter I sent out and the back was a suggested.
About where we took the full shed. Good, I just want to get the number right.
I'm, I'll have to re-listen to the message. I was trying to get, you know how the computer Xfinity will print out what the messages? I couldn't understand everything that was said. I'm gonna have to listen much clearly, much more carefully to hear. Said why he only did that much. I couldn't understand it all.
All right. Yeah, those are pretty handy. We'll use it.
Yeah, I couldn't, I couldn't connect with the Xfinity that was down. But yes, I wrote to Mr. Fitzpatrick asking about board of delivery and I also asked that he does a daily content, contracted materials ticket list. I also wrote to Carville in Ohio asking them the same thing, that ticket lists be dropped in our office slots so that they don't get flown away by the weather. So those.
Yeah. Salt is delivered from Rockingham by Barrett.
I asked, yeah, I asked the woman, I said, let your local vendor, please identify your local vendor who I was delivering for you to use the town office box.
Yeah.
So, all right, I'll check with you on that amount of sand if there was a.
I was wondering if we should add something to our sanded paperwork with the, if they needed by.
That's a great idea, I think.
Future.
That is not in the current bid.
I've heard of the sheet, huh?
Can I ask you a question? Do we, have you had any feedback recently from other road crews in towns that Fitzpatrick is the sand vendor? Or is nobody got getting sand? Or are we the only ones who haven't gotten sand?
I know a couple of weeks back, I made, I had a conversation with Ward's Bros. Road Foreman and at that point, they hadn't seen any, but since then I've driven by and they they've received quite a bit of sand. They must be nearing two-thirds of what they were looking for. So they are getting sand. And I'm pretty sure Jamaica was another town that was receiving sand and I think they may have just theirs.
I don't know about New Fame, but I know you also wanted a new thing.
Yeah, you're right. I threw, yesterday I heard they were wondering about their sand and maybe they've gotten it by now.
I know that they always got some, I don't know.
But I do agree, we need to put, maybe tighten up on a couple of those, the way the bids are worded so that we have a delivery by date in it.
Yeah, I mean, we had enough to go, a couple storms left in the shed, but, you know, over the past few weeks, it's been threatened in flurries and rain, you know, freezing rain at night. It just might be a good idea to make sure we've got a certain amount in the shed by a certain date.
Does the shed hold the full 200 yards that, we only get one delivery, is that basically what happens?
No, that's just the capacity of what the shed is now, is 200 yards of sand. So, you know, depending on the weather, how far the 200 goes. It looks like the board did a spreadsheet on like five years of salt sand usage and some years there was, this shed was filled two to three times.
I think they delivered about 600 last year, just.
Just one quick question, do we have a plan B in the event that the sand doesn't materialize?
Well, you know, I, I put a little bit of thought, I didn't know if it would go to the second bidder or what we have to do there. Or whoever is plowing sanding could get.
I'll have to go back and listen to that voicemail again and I was just glad to come home and find that the word, I made a delivery today, or I made a delivery was, oh, so I was like, okay, good. I was concerned that there was going to be a default on the contract and making that delivery upon receiving the email last night was a good sign that today, oh, it's good.
Although I guess to the longer term, I assume we can get a delivery ticket.
You didn't find any delivery ticket in your door, did you? So I can email again or call, I'll do that, no problem, find out about the delivery ticket. So I can email again or call, I'll do that, no problem, find out about the delivery ticket.
So I guess to answer Dave's question, if you know another year, if we have a set date for sand to be delivered, and it defaults, then we should have a backup plan for it.
You feel it was about 7 yards? You could adjust it. You're like one truckload, you're thinking, or?
Yeah. A small truckload.
All right, well, I'll give you this back, or?
I, I had it on my computer, it's.
Okay, all right, so I'll take it.
I apologize for the printer, it looks like it's. January 5th, we did.
January 5th, 35.
Where do you think we should do it? Be the high one, maybe first, me here, and then we'll go?
Yeah.
Okay. And then we can do whatever we want, that's that.
Bang it out. Bang it out.
If you guys want that in a minute, it's gonna have to be louder and enunciating.
Archie, with this request for proposal. Okay, it says for sealed bid bids, because we're not accepting email bids, they're sealed bids, and they are received by 6:00 PM on January 17th, to be open at the meeting at 6:30. We're not gonna open it at 6:00, though.
Oh, but the bids are due at 6:00.
Okay, all right.
So. Want me to put that, that those in at all?
This is.
If you want me to add that we open at 6:30, would that be?
Yeah.
Oh, oh, yeah, it's 6:30, isn't it? Not 6:00.
Yeah, received by 6:00, yeah, so 6:30, not 6:00.
Yeah, let's put 6:30, and they're due at 6:30. I'll make that change, I'm sorry.
Now, what's that a bid for?
This is for the box culvert on Grass Eagle Road, concrete box culvert on Grass Eagle. All right, very good to check that.
And I'll email it to you.
Yeah, that's good.
Okay, you're talking about for the webpage? Yep, yep, and then I can just upload it to the webpage.
Make that known in the paper, that it'll be available on the website.
Yep.
The only other thing, on our painting guy there, did we receive a paint contractor or anything?
He sent a, a whole, an August one.
Here's, here is, this is the quote.
I'm just curious if there's any type of order D with the.
How long it lasts.
How long it would get, if the weather gets cold in the afternoon.
It does not say anything.
Yeah, pretty big. I, I questioned it when he said it would be, well, he told me it would be good to, in August, now, of course, it's December, and he said it was good to 15 degrees.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Kind of a little cold.
You think? I never. Bruce is gonna drive over it, I know he will.
I can tell you a story later, remind me, where I did that once.
Put it on purpose.
On purpose, definitely not purpose. You wouldn't believe what was going on. At the base of Manchester, not, it's a story, not for now. Pretty interesting.
What was that, was it?
You want, you want, you want to take this?
No, no, I just wanted, actually, I asked the final price, not to exceed.
Well, we thought, I, I thought it was not to exceed 3,500, but, but the minutes showed 4,000. We calculated it to be 3,484 dollars and 80 cents.
Yeah, because that was part of, I had gone with 4,000, because it was, 3,500 was maybe gonna be too close.
Too close, it was, yeah, it was like 20, 16 dollars.
We were a little fuzzy on the exact mileage, so I think we.
Right, so we, so the minutes showed not to exceed 4,000.
Yes.
Now, that's just Hill Road, or is that also Puttenbrock?
That's not.
Is this a good time to ask you about a pothole? I don't know if that's possible to do in this temperature, or? Right in front of the house.
Okay, I think I noticed it when I was painting.
The lines.
Right, the line tangent.
Yeah, it's not that big, but it's about.
Sure, yeah, let's see, I'll see if I can. All right, I think that makes most of it.
Okay, so then we're gonna move into, we're gonna move into budgeting, we can all cozy up to the table. You wanna do that? I just heard you say that, and I'm like, I should have.
Are you just working on the highways, the highway?
Today, we're gonna, depending upon the amount of time that we have available, so that we're at 3:00 AM, we're gonna work with the highway, and talk about any salary or payroll updates and appropriations, in that order.
Mark, you wanna?
So we're gonna start with funds, too?
If I say something hysterically, don't be shy. We pretty much, like I said.
Anyone need other, I'm sorry, that's a little.
Level funded. The first line, we started down to summer salaries and mileage. We were at 15,500, and we, we held that, now the variable there is, I guess it's part of the discussion. If there's an increase in salaries, there. Does that make sense?
Did you say, Archie?
I guess, for many sheets.
We had the 15,500, and that's assuming that the salaries, the rate of paying, you'd say the same, but there is a. And so if the rate of pay increases by 5%, let's say, this number will go by 5%.
Some salaries.
Summer salaries and lunders.
And we came in last fiscal year, we just ended at 14,400.
A little under 14,400. Mark, Mark can ever usually, I'm a little old, not actually, but, that's good, it's pretty close.
Great.
Pretty close. So is everybody good with that line?
Yeah.
And for payroll taxes, is.
So you're saying 15,500 for the proposed 219, is that where you're at?
Is that?
Right, again, there's.
Is that an increase in hour, I, I was looking at increasing the hourly rate versus number of hours, but.
What I'm saying is.
Right, if we change that, we should.
It would go up proportionally. If there was a 10% increase, or a 5% increase in the rate, this number will go up by 5%, whatever, whatever increase that.
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
So do we need to decide that now?
Well, the question is, the 13,458 is, is the salaries for, do we have a dedicated amount of hours that we allow? Or, or is it just an estimate? So I, I'd like to know how many hours that we're allocating toward the salaries, or somebody calls by, because some people's gonna ask that.
Well, I think, I don't think we should get down to that if our plan is to discuss salaries collectively after we get through this.
Okay.
For the moment, we leave this as it is.
Because, quite frankly, it is what it is.
Okay, because we do have this employee base online here.
Summer contracted services, did you, did you happen to bring the, the scenario? Anyway, this is, this is one of those budget items that's, as you can see, way, way overrated. A lot of this you can rule as. Yeah, preparation for paving and. This line item is just sort of general, it's everything from line striping to mowing to steel coating to. Culver replacements.
So this was part of conversation last week, where you wanted to, where you wanted to break it out into more itemized?
So I, can I ask Samara to do that last time, and she did, I don't know if she gave everybody a percent, everybody a.
I don't think so.
I was extremely confused when I read, you got it. I think I did, too. I don't know how many I'll fill about it, but I think, I think it's a lot more confusing than it has to be. I'm gonna go in the back, one of those.
Do you want some copies of this? Does everyone have this?
No, not everyone has it, no.
I'll make some copies.
Just some general, like, over the relation, shoulders, brush and true, ledger, roadside mowing, football field. Yeah, you can make as many categories as you want, or maybe you're all fine with it, just like it is. I know I'm always a little confused when I look at this number and say. If it was broke down a little more, it'd be easier.
We can't control.
It'd be easier to try, yeah.
Yeah, well, you can't.
Control it.
And probably answer more when the town sees it, too.
Must be pretty hard for you, Archie, you know, looking at, oh, geez, where is this going? Do you have one?
Like, after all that discussion, we, Mark and I decided to increase this number from 37 to 39. I was thinking, you know, you want another week with the mower, that's good. True rule, just, you know, there's 7,200, you know, 37,000 goes pretty fast when you.
Out of this.
You know, you get 7,200 here, and 7,200 here, and 29,000 here, now times two is 5,800.
But some of this.
It's gonna go pretty fast.
But some of the stuff on this one won't be done this year, correct?
Will be done in the next contract.
That's right, that's how that.
Right, which, so anyway, that goes back to 61,000, 42,000, that's a pretty easy number to overspend on, because it's so broad and. We.
So you want.
However you want to break it out is, is, I guess it's a subject for discussion. But the real important thing is, the, the number, the bottom line, we felt that you'd increase by 2,000, and we're gonna offset it later in this discussion, but, so, calm down, Bruce.
You must hang, I'm good. 37?
39.
No, that applies to the fact this year.
But if you wanted to break it down, I think Samara's just looking for input on how. She's got, what she's got is kind of a detailed breakdown of how the 61,000 was derived at.
Right.
Basically, in a nutshell, what those major segments were over the last, over the last year. But I would, I would kind of pull from that more in general, you know, the Culver installations, is it roadside mowing? Is it, make more general categories rather than specific projects.
Well, this gives you good breakout, though.
It gives you a good breakout.
It does.
But it's, I know you sound confusing.
Does it help you come up with a number?
Some of the extra was from paving, which we don't do every year, and we had a lot of prep, prep work for paving, and then shoulder routing.
But then again, there's gonna be things you're gonna do this year, that you might have spent $5,000 this year on that, but you're gonna spend $4,000 this year on this, so it's kind of hard to predict that. That's a real, that's a real issue for you guys trying to budget, all the things. Well, I guess, with the breakdown. Well, with the 61,463, you know, your 26,000 over budget, where did that money come from? Where did they get the money to pay those bills?
It came out of the undesigned highway in.
All right, so that's that, that's what we talked about, building a cushion in the event that we had to have a one-time.
Do you guys have this?
So how much was that cushion? Well, well, we used a, a, quite a bit of it with the paving.
Yeah, we used a bit of it.
But, but the question was, did we need to have that much of a cushion? And the answer is obviously that we need to, because you just never know. So going forward, do we have any cushion left? And what do we need to do to make sure that these guys can do their job? Right, well, that's why he bumped it to 39, that's not much. You know, that's why you got some bucks. Right, but this, this year is not gonna be every year.
We're not gonna be doing paving next year.
Right, that 31,000 dollars is worth getting lost in the weeds.
So you're confident here, that's a good range.
So you're confident here, that's a good range.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, that's a workable budget for you, Archie, is that what you're saying?
Right.
That's a workable budget for you, is what you're saying.
Yeah, I think in the past, on an average, we've maintained pretty close to the numbers, so this last year was a busy year with that.
You don't want to weigh over that much.
Yeah.
You've got a huge amount of stuff.
I think most of the time, without anything major, we were able to hold it steady.
So if you really want to streamline this conversation, we could, we, all the, all the numbers were the same except for when we got down to bridge maintenance. Like I said last time, this, in the, not that we don't need bridge maintenance, but if you look on the balance sheet, we got as of six thirty seventeen, there's a hundred and four thousand, eight hundred and fifty six dollars left in the bridge and culvert, bridges and culvert. Oh, okay. What's one? Yeah, it's in the...
Okay.
So where's that, that's down the bottom here?
So that's the last, the last line.
Right.
And you're saying everything, as far as numbers, you're good with sticking with the proposed numbers everywhere down to that?
Right, again, except for the...
Except for this, yeah.
So a thousand for township maintenance, two hundred for seminars, highway insurance, forty two hundred.
So what happened to all these?
What are you saying, that these are all still the same? Four thousand for fuel parts maintenance, eighteen hundred for road signs, and the culverts good at forty five hundred?
Yeah, again, we replaced a lot of culverts because of preparation.
Paving, re-treatment lines, non-granted materials for summers, the thirty thousand? The next two items are blank and five thousand for bridge maintenance, did you say, or decrease? Do you want it to decrease that?
So decrease to three.
Decrease that to three.
Which offsets...
Offsets that two grand.
Increase to two.
Still a little money.
Decrease to three, yeah.
Which offsets the...
You have the two thousand on the other side.
The bridge, bridge man.
My question, do you keep a culvert inventory?
Well, yeah, we do.
Do we have enough for that to continue that inventory?
Oh, I thought you meant in the, culvert's in the ground?
No, no, no.
Yeah, I think right now there's only a couple, isn't there, right?
Yeah, yeah, we usually get them and begin with season.
Yes, okay.
But out of that forty five hundred, no one, each culvert's right around two hundred for eighteen inch.
Right, so you have enough to do your work in the event of...
Yeah, we have a plan to do like five to six sites a year. Some of them will be a single culvert, some will be a double and one and a half, so...
No, I just want to make sure that you had that.
To stay with the program, if we do around five to six a year.
There's a bunch of them way up near the top of the mountain that are pretty, pretty bad, but a lot of those are only twenty, twenty, twenty-four foot long, because it's obviously it's pretty bad.
Each time we do one, we try to make it...
No, I just want to make sure that you add appropriate enough money in the culvert program to make sure that we maintain that inventory in the yard.
Yeah, well, you know, there's always room for extra, but if we can do five, six a year, that's what we've done for the past several years.
And that's forty...
Sometimes you'll have some that show up unexpectedly that, you know, you'll find all, and one we didn't count on, but yeah, that number is...
Forty five hundred is a fairly, fairly good...
Yeah, and again, this is just for culverts itself, not the installation follows the contract and...
All right, so all those numbers, you're going to level on those?
Yep.
So the only variance is what we decide on the table.
Cool.
And the bond interest, of course, that's in...
Yeah, that's going to, that's going to...
Now, this isn't easy for you guys to do this. It takes a incredible amount of work.
The other thing that we should talk about is the, we've talked about it a few times, is that the forty eight thousand, that Samar, I think, to think that it's doable within the, within the budget. She also found out that, we had a question whether we could do short-term borrowing.
Yeah.
Right.
She didn't send an email.
Oh, she did send it?
She did, yeah.
Okay. I didn't know if that went to everybody.
Confirming that she can.
Right, it turns out there's, I think, seven, seven reasons why a town can borrow money in anticipation of certain things, and I hope it's great. So I guess my only fear is that the box cover and the shed come at the same time, sort of, you know? I think the shed, like she said, you could do probably two or three in summers. The box cover is like a two-week job, and then it can have a...
The shed, we can only do one, one payment?
Civil.
Right, yep, that's all, we have one shot at it. I mean, I'm sorry, one other than the final payment.
So it's...
So no, what do you...
That's getting half or...
Yes, you can. Only, you can only do it once, whether you do it a half, a third, or a three quarters, whatever you feel. When you run out of money, you say, look, I need a reimbursement. If you haven't done a reimbursement, they'll give you what you asked for to that point. So, you know, that's a fail-safe for us. In the event, like you said, we have two things going.
Usually a contractor, if they do, if they do fifty percent of a project, they get seventy five percent of the fifty.
Right.
In other words, you never get...
Pretty much, of course. Right. But the bottom line is that we do have the opportunity, we don't have to wait as a town for the job to be completed, to be reimbursed. We have one opportunity to do one payment prior to the final reimbursement.
But Samar says that we can get a loan based on, if, like what you're saying, both come together at the same time?
Right.
And we're in a rear, we need fifty thousand or twenty five thousand dollars.
You can.
Now, what we're on that, one thing I ran into when I started writing the RFP for the shed is, I guess I never asked the question, I was only assuming in my own mind, not that, not the only one here. Do we want to hire a general contractor to oversee the whole project? Or is the town going to be the general contractor and, you know, hire, hire a, hire a concrete guy, you know, that's...
That's a lot of work, yes.
Yeah.
Well, no, that's, that's a complex, yeah.
It is.
Things go wrong real fast.
Has the town done that before, hired a G C, a general contractor for a major project or construction?
I don't remember.
Maybe this building being built, I don't know if there was one or...
A lot of this was done by years.
By years? How much would that add to the project? How many did you see?
I think, yeah, usually it's at least ten percent, very much like fifteen, fifteen percent, sorry. But I think that's, you know...
But you can't be expected to be the G C, I mean, you've got a full-time...
But you, you know, if you hire like five different tradesmen to do different phases of the project, somebody's got to be...
Exactly. Someone's got to synchronize that and make sure, and then someone's got to look at it and make sure it's done.
Right.
You know, they've got to...
Somebody knows what they're looking at.
Exactly.
Well, directing is one thing, coordinating the whole thing is...
No, 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 I mean, a general contractor, these are the last, that's where the buck stops.
That's right.
So...
Like you said, like I said before, you know, you hold back a certain amount of money until, you know, everything, a bunch of this is taken care of, you know, the electrician been there, the roofer's been there, the concrete guy's been there.
Uh-huh, yep.
So on your request for a bid, you're going to ask to incorporate the fee for a G C?
Well, I'm, that's why I'm asking the question. So we go out to general contractors, like somebody that's willing to look at a project and be the head contractor, G C.
I mean, it seems like that's the only option.
Should we find out what other towns have done?
It's way too much risk.
Very similar projects or...
Yeah, to a G C pool?
Yeah, there's...
In recent years, Winlaw did one this year when we were working up there in...
Townsend?
Who the general contractor was.
In Jamaica.
Who was it?
Townsend in Jamaica have all had new structures.
Oh, but do you know where the G C was?
No, no, I don't, I'm just thinking of other towns who've had, kind of worked.
So it's going to be, you know, for each general contractor.
That's a good...
This salt sand shed, is it going to be built in this fiscal year or the eighteen, nineteen fiscal year?
The eighteen, nineteen, the...
All right. I didn't know if we had to have a timeline for the grant of, you know...
Do we...
Yeah, two, three years?
I think it's a two-year grant.
I believe it is.
I think it's a two, I'm pretty sure.
It's a two-year.
Do we have actual blueprints for a complete shed?
You had submitted...
We have, yeah, Ron did the design. And we actually use the A O T as a kind of a generic...
The recommendation.
Well, that's, it's a pretty detailed...
That was a good template, yes.
It's a pretty detailed template, you know? You know, right down to the type of roofing and the, you know, the size of the trusses and the, you know, how much carpet, where the... And what Ron did was made a site plan, took that template and made it fit the site, you know, gave elevations and then, you know, locations and tie lines and...
Yeah, that was important, yeah, that was...
It was, it was part of what we needed to apply.
Correct, correct. Yeah, there was some engineering thing that we had to submit or something.
The cost of the sand shed in total was four hundred thousand?
No, no, no.
Two hundred, four, was it four hundred or forty thousand?
I thought that, yep, and we got a hundred and eighty in grant, I thought, and we had to raise up the rest of money, which we already had eight thousand appropriated toward it from the last year as well.
So you're looking at fifteen percent of that cost, thirty six, another thirty six thousand dollars for a general contractor? I think it's fifteen percent of the...
I don't know, and you're...
Yeah, I'm not sure of that. Well, I think what we do is...
We'll know when we get the bids.
Right, right.
See where they fall.
Right, bids down here on our fourth, we're awarded a hundred and eighty thousand for salt sand shed, town responsibility forty seven thousand, total is thirty five.
This is thirty nine, we got a couple. Well, now we have two years, so once we put this thing out to bid, then we can, then we're going to...
Yeah, right, that's still...
Try out what we're going to do about the rest of it.
Because if you don't have a bid with any contractors, then...
But out of that, we already have eight said studies, so...
Right.
But, I mean, to get back to...
I was just looking at the additional amount for the ten to fifteen percent additional for contractor overseeing this.
And my final question is that, do we have to, do we have appropriate funds now to do that, or do we have to ask the town, a town meeting, do we have to submit an article, ask for the additional thirty five, forty thousand dollars that we need to raise?
Well, you know, again, Samar seems to think that we have...
That's what I thought, that we have it.
But maybe we should, again...
Not including the G C.
No, not, you're...
You're talking about the thirty eight.
Yeah, we had, we had that cushion, that extra money.
Yeah, I'll tie that up to local nights.
Uh-huh, yeah, I want to kind of remember that.
Should we have her next meeting?
Yeah, I guess we have to ask her to come to the next meeting and look at...
Yeah, she's away this week.
Yeah, she'll be home tomorrow, tomorrow, but, you know, she has the deep plan in savings, but...
At the same time, she locked, of course, she's gone.
Down in Disney and Disney off?
My daughter...
Where are the funding all?
My daughter-in-law had a seminar, and she has a little son.
Funding for...
Her grandson, so she was going to watch the child, you know, Disney.
Funding for...
The seminar. Probably do some visiting and stuff.
Oh, sure.
And funding for possible general contractor.
That's going to be interesting.
I want to be a general contractor then.
Although, I guess the thing I don't, I guess that I don't, like, how would we have ever bid this in the first place? I mean, you know what I mean?
Well, yeah, you'll have to, you'll have to...
We would have never, we wouldn't have put out, or, I mean, presumably, we wouldn't have thought that we were going to put out a bid for somebody to do the electrical, a bid for somebody to do, we weren't going to put out, were we actually, would we have put out eight bids for all of the different?
I don't think...
You know what I mean?
I have never had a question, so I, you know, I was assuming the weird times.
How did we come up, because I wasn't around for this, when we, like, how do we, how do we come up with an estimate for how much that was going to cost in the first place?
Based upon the blueprint that you had and talking to...
They basically, you know, they take the square footage and so many dollars for square footage. Actually, you're going to...
And are we sure that that dollar per square foot might not have included general contractor?
Back now, I did, I got a materials cost estimate from W W. And I got a cost estimate on the concrete, the concrete is a huge square, it's over a hundred thousand dollars in concrete, it's massive. But anyway, so I got a cost estimate for that, I got a cost estimate from W W, and I think I got a little bit of a estimate from somebody, I don't remember who it was. So...
Okay.
And then there's also included, you know, tearing down the old structure and...
Right. Now, maybe you talk for us to consider local health again, see if we can get some assistance from people at town. You got Bojett as an avenue?
I don't know, it's a, it's a big project and it's going to be done properly.
Yeah, right, yeah, I mean, the bottom line is, it's the only realistic way for us to do it.
This building's going to have to be done.
It's got to be done over first or something.
But you're finding less and less people who really want to put that down.
I know.
And, you know, you can't have promises and always show off and stuff.
Oh, yeah, I've been there.
So...
And so, so I guess what I'd say, though, so there's nothing about, I mean, if we decide from Samar's standpoint, when we discuss with her, that, you know, if she doesn't, for some reason, think that we have the money to be able to deal with it, or the flexibility in the payment terms, then it's just going to be warning, an article, that doesn't change anything about the budget.
Right, right.
Because our budget, we can, we can finalize our budget stuff, but we need to have that discussion before we warn all the articles for them.
Yeah, the article would be a separate...
We have figured that out, right.
So tell them, I would say, whether they want to pay that.
Does a, does a thing, since Samar said that we could go, needed to go for a loan, is that something we have to do an article for?
Not a short-term loan.
No, the select one has to be...
You know, as long as it's paid back by a year, it gives you a year to...
Right, which is what you're looking for, a short-term, in the event you need to...
Right.
It takes loans right now, I mean, because...
Basically, it's an anticipation of grant, kind of that, so when the grant went back in... So you can't, you can't borrow more than the anticipated.
Okay, okay, so...
So what I'm going to do now, Samar, saying tonight that we spoke about, three questions came up that we'd like for her to come to the next meeting to talk about, the funding for the box cover, the funding to match, and the funding, the matching funding for the forty five or forty seven K, and funding for a possible general contractor, which we hadn't talked about before. It's not budgeted, we're not talking, we can't talk about budget tonight for that because we don't know.
We don't know if Samar thinks we've got more money than that thirty eight or thirty nine thousand.
Well, we have to see the, you know, you have to see the balance sheet to see where the money is, because, you know, we've had some cushions before... Well, we have to see the, you know, you have to see the balance sheet to see where the money is, because, you know, we've had some cushions before and what's left of it, I, I, to be honest, I, that's pure speculation. You need to have the exactly article on this.
Yep.
So if we go back to this updated worksheet, this page.
Uh-huh, we're talking about.
On your one. It says highway? Yeah, highway updated to the oh dash one.
What page do you, oh, it's a, it's stuck on the last page.
I'm just looking here, this is current taxes that we're, and then it says state age thirty eight thousand. I'm just looking down. There's nothing to be put under highway paving grant. There's nothing to be put under better back road grant. There's a hundred for permits and two hundred for interest.
Okay.
And then the, then going, continuing down, we have, we're going to go back to summer salaries and summer payroll taxes. Because the other, otherwise, the numbers are remaining the same.
Uh-huh.
One one eight six, thirty nine thousand to thirty seven thousand. Better back road grants, we can't fill in. And then we had highway material twenty one thousand, eight hundred for winter salaries and mileage. Payroll taxes sixty one, contract services thirty three thousand, winter materials twenty one thousand, and electric shed, electric at the town shed, four hundred and fifty dollars.
Wait, then, you said contract services, how much?
Winter contract services, equipment.
Thirty three.
Three thousand.
I thought you said thirty six, sorry.
Because I know Samara wants to know these numbers, so I'm just going to try to look at that. Yeah.
Everything else, a thousand two hundred, what's your number for that?
And the insurance, I, you know, I don't, she has that too.
Sure. Yeah, we just got an estimate, she just recently got that. So that, she has numbers on that.
So it's a change.
What page is that last?
A quarter way down.
Second to the last page.
Insurance highway. Uh, we had, we had some on that, but.
The second to the last page.
Oh, you're in general.
Keep going. Or, she's, she's around the biggest one.
Okay.
Insurance highway.
Insurance highway, about four thousand two hundred.
So what I'm setting her. What did that?
So she has any tickets?
Yeah, we don't know. So that's another variable.
This one might change also, the insurance.
Yeah.
I thought she just recently, I remember, seen a mail with some insurance figures and clauses, you know.
Plus the insurance too, maybe it says.
Yeah, yeah. Everything is through BLCT. There was an email screening regarding BLCT, you know, being a, having a lock on the insurance, and they went to look at other insurance agencies and they realized that BLCT was a pretty deal, pretty good deal, so. But like everything else, it's going up.
So we're done though? The only variable is the insurance, we're done?
And payroll.
And payroll, of course.
I think so. I did call and confirm the two-week list, so we, that they, they there for us. And he had us down on calendar two. And he was going to send information down, and he sent up.
That's two consecutive weeks, right?
Right, two consecutive weeks, and spring, the end of June. And I mentioned the possible follow, but we didn't, I didn't give him a date. That's, I guess, something we will figure out. The tractor that, the town had.
How many did you get for?
Probably five or four. They just sold to another town.
One that you used?
Yeah, so I guess they're constantly upgrading their.
Upgrading the equipment and then they sell it.
And they're a dealership for the mowers and tractors, so. He said, uh, some towns buy brand new, some towns will buy used. You can lease them. He said there's a credit, uh, credit union up there that people deal with, where you can get a five-year lease, and at the end of the lease, you buy it for a dollar. But, but he was going to send information on new, used leases and.
I don't know if it came in the mail.
You haven't seen that from me, guys, so maybe he hasn't put it together yet, but it's been a couple of weeks. And he said he was, you know, the town helped with the making. Because, you know, I just, after I mentioned it, you know, if you're spending six thousand to rent the tractor, then you've got operating expenses. And then if again in the fall, that's pretty good payment toward the tractor. You can take five years of that consistent.
Then you can form a destiny, you know.
So it's just something, way out.
Yeah.
Maybe we'll try it again this year for two weeks and see if it's working out the way you like, and then consider.
Would be less dependent on Gary.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Probably Gary would be disappointed.
Have you ever gone into any of those auctions? I mean, I know auctions are a dangerous thing, but sometimes, you know, I'm just curious if you ever had the opportunity to go to any of those.
Um, no, I, I try to stay away.
Okay.
I go for a lot of auctions. You know, bad, good, bad.
Yeah, because once in a while we get a flyer from, you know, different auction houses that. Or anything else, you know. Once you get a few.
Yeah, there's a lot of mental equipment that gets auctioned up, uh, online, you know, online auctions.
Starting, of the loans that Samara checked into for the town, there was one, uh.
All right, let me see.
Municipal suggestion.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
As I say, we're, we're moving on, right?
Yeah, are we going to move to fully payments, summary review, and then appropriations, and then we're pretty much.
Okay, so then? Then we go, do the appropriations first, sum that up, that should take pretty quickly. And then finalize what we have for the worksheet. And then, at that point, we're getting a good idea of where we are, plus and minus, in terms of dollars and cents. And then look at the pay, the pays of, of the rate, pay rates for the town people.
All right, well, Samara sent this out, an appropriations checklist as of twelve one seventeen. Does everybody have that one?
Yes.
You can see that she has gotten some more appropriations in. So we'll go through here. First one was American Red Cross.
Yeah.
And he, there's, there was no chain, uh, so they have not, the American Red Cross has not requested anything asked of yet.
Uh, Doc, did we, we had a cut-off day, didn't we?
I, I thought we had received something from the American Red Cross.
As it came in tonight's mail, but this, as of the first jan, uh, first of December. Do you remember, can you look at this?
Yeah, there's a red cross.
Oh, there is something in here, so there are some things they think, and I think.
Oh, okay. I thought I seen it.
Let me, let me take a look and we can throw that number in there. Town of Brooklyn.
Well, let's see, Red Cross. Could have made quite a lot.
Well, yeah, I sat in control too, because there's so many different people. Everybody's looking for money, for money, for money.
Look at your mailbox.
I must warn town.
Okay, it says.
What's it say? Everybody, I mean, we try to say it was great.
It's quite a generic letter, dear friend, in this season of hope, so on and so forth. Says, your gift of two hundred ninety seven dollars and fifty cents or more will bring comfort.
I think that's just a.
That's probably a generic.
It's very, it's a generic one.
Which we received one.
That's received on November twenty eighth.
Okay.
So, um, it's not one that's, I don't know the type.
Well, it has down, it has down two fifty requested.
No, it doesn't.
Since right here. Twenty eighteen twenty.
Required letter, date received, and there was nothing there.
There's no date, but it's requested.
Sometimes when, when the appropriation is sent to the whoever requested it, they send a thank you letter and also asking for the next year to be, you know, the thing, so.
Oh, okay.
As far as whatever goes, I think two fifty is a reasonable.
Okay, so I'll go through this one. I say, American Red Cross in the past have requested, and looking at this part, two hundred fifty dollars. This is select board, except to put on to her town vote, the American Red Cross donation of two hundred fifty dollars. Yeah, yay or nay?
Yeah, crazy.
Yes. The current Connecticut River Transit in the past has asked for two fifty. They requested a hundred and twenty five dollars this year, which is a reduction.
Sounds good.
Is it okay to put one twenty fives for the town vote?
Yeah.
The Grace Cottage Foundation, there is a request for three hundred dollars. Is that all right to put for?
This is the one where last week, we had Linda Ball come in and ask for five hundred instead of the three hundred.
But we did not receive anything from.
Right, that was just a, a, an individual.
So that has to be dealt by article.
Right, but. Well, you have to have twenty percent of the volume and so forth, but I guess, I guess what I wanted to say in regards to the Grace Cottage Foundation, I overheard something because I was busy inside, and she was saying how many people use it and everything else. The numbers that she gave were probably very true, but don't forget, when you go to Grace Cottage Hospital, you pay. You know, you don't owe it. So it's not, you know, I have a hard time sometimes giving a, a business, a, a donation that's in business to make money.
They haven't asked for the five hundred dollars, and I know, so I think.
The three hundred dollars.
If their committee for appropriation requesting is on the ball that they should have given up front end. So no, no difference for this as goal, but if they've asked for three hundred, I think we can.
Yeah, I agree completely.
Yeah, I want to support them, but I don't want to go to the poor house.
Green Mountain RSVP was requested a hundred and fifty dollars in the past. We, the select board turned down that request because we found no benefit to our community, and it doesn't appear that they have requested it again, so there's nothing for that. So let's skip that. Greenup Vermont has asked for a request of fifty dollars.
That's reasonable.
Reasonable to continue to support them with a fifty dollar appropriation.
Absolutely, it is.
Those rated days have.
I'm exactly sure.
In the past, we were appropriating three hundred dollars in the past two years, so they again requested the same amount. Is that all right, the select board, to put it for, oh, it's three hundred? This is for in-center morning side shelter. Three hundred. Historical Society of Wyndham County is also asking for two hundred and fifty dollars as they have in the past. Is that okay to do that?
Uh-huh.
Historical Society of Wyndham County.
Now, what's for this?
Leland and Gray Education Foundation has not requested anything from the two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen year. In the past, they have requested two hundred and fifty dollars, so we shall leave that open if they're not requesting it, or if they don't even there.
Well, for some reason, I, I almost remember seeing a request from them, but.
Of course, that was two weeks ago.
Yeah, a while ago.
Historical wanted, historical wanted two fifty. I'll leave this open, and I know Louise, the other day, when I was in the office, she was calling up people, saying we haven't gotten your requests, so I'll leave that open and not naming that.
Definitely.
The Moore Free Library has requested an increase of twenty five dollars from two twenty five to two hundred and fifty dollars for the, for the next fiscal year. Is that all right to do the increase, to ask for the voters to pay two hundred and fifty donation?
I don't think it's going to.
I'm okay with that.
Yeah.
Uh, Project Feed the Thousands, C note on.
On Q.
On request.
I guess they're in the request.
In the request.
They have not asked for any change. There's a one hundred dollar donation that was approved in the past. The same amount as here.
Yep.
One hundred dollars.
So that's, all right, so a hundred dollars for Project Feed the Thousands.
Correct.
A hundred dollars.
Correct. Senior Solutions has asked for six fifty. We approved five hundred. There's nothing here for this year's request, so then I shall leave this open.
That's wonderful. Eight hundred and fifty bucks so far.
Setka, in the past, has asked for and received an appropriation of four hundred and sixty five dollars. That is the same amount being asked for this year. Is that an amount that we can follow through on?
Yeah.
Townsend Food Bank and Project Feed designated.
See, Project Feed, where's that?
Well, that's where the Project Feed the Thousands. I don't know. One was for Rattleboro, and I think the other was for Townsend, or they may have, I'm not sure about that.
I'm, I'm wondering if one has absorbed the other.
Seems like that might be the case.
The reason we had a question is, like Guy said, one serviced Rattleboro, where the other one serviced more.
Out here.
Nine Townsend.
The Townsend Valley area.
But there's no request from, uh, from the one from Townsend. The Thousands has requested a hundred. So, all right, I'm going to leave this one open, and something that we can talk to Samara about, next time we see her, Townsend Food Bank.
Okay.
VABVI Association for the Blind has requested a one hundred dollars again this year. It's an approving question last year. Want to follow through with that?
Sure.
Uh, the Fire Hydrant Grant was turned down last year. We got another grant request this year through the email. I made a copy of it.
Well, they, yeah, those are the dry hydrants that they do, and it's really, it's a whole program that they do. It's not just the dry hydrants, but they do a lot of work, and they're a nonprofit. And if you look down at the bottom, you're going to see VACD new, new request, and they requested a hundred dollars. It was turned down in eighteen because I don't think, either they didn't understand the request, which I did break out in, in the town report when I, when I did the minutes, but it has something to do with the dry hydrants, but other, other projects that they do. They have another name. They changed their name, and I think we need to look at that. Because it's important that, remember the, that was a different name.
It's because of George D. A. and, um, something.
Here it is. Vermont Association of Conservation Districts invoice for dry hydrant, fire, here, I'll pass this around. This is what they asked for. One of the things that we had talked about in previous years with this was that we did not have any need for any more, there weren't any big locations for a dry hydrant to benefit the residents of Brooklyn, because they want it Servos, there's.
One at Dover Wellmans.
Wellmans, there's one at Parkers.
Yeah.
But it.
Oils.
But there were other, there were other things that they did, um, which is in that year. What? Yeah. All right, so, so, all right, so that's a question mark. I mean, we're doing.
You know what? I'm going to go back to Grace Cottage Hospital.
Yeah.
Grace Cottage Hospital has seen. It's listed here. Grace Cottage Hospital has seen, has sent a letter asking for $500.
I wonder why.
Like I said.
The first one received was received.
When you go to hospital, you don't get free service.
It's not changed. December 4th, Grace Cottage Hospital asked for, there was two requests.
She can, she can say, yeah.
We hope that you will consider this revised request instead of the one I mistakenly sent out in October.
She, she just said it was a revise because they mistakenly sent out the first one.
We hope that you will consider this revised request instead of the one I sent out mistakenly in October.
Was it signed legal ball?
Andrea Seaton.
No, I think we should leave it the way we do. I'm comfortable with Cynthia.
I am also.
Me too. Hey, well, we gotta balance the budget. I mean.
Well, no, it's just that, as like I said, there's more and more people coming out of Woodmore asking for more and more money. And the town historically has always done around 6,000, 6,500 dollars. And that's basically what we can afford and that is really, excuse the pun, but it's actual.
Actually, that's not what this town can afford because the rate of increase of the taxes has been going up on everything else. So actually, we can afford less at this point, but we're good guys.
Well, no, you're.
Yeah, we don't want to take care of these programs, but you got my point, I mean.
So.
We're, we're used to that a little bit, yeah.
So they requested 100 previously, at least last year, if not before. And the thinking of the board has been that we don't really have a need for what they do. In our town. Just, just, I'm just, I'm trying to get around to the, the Dry Hydrant Association. We've rejected their request in the past. Is there any reason why that changes? Why we should grant it now?
If I had no reason, I wouldn't go. If anybody else has a point, forgive me.
Green Up, so yes, yay or nay on the dry hydrant request for $100?
No.
Okay, deny. Okay. Valley Cares.
What's with that?
Hold on.
It's gotta be in there.
They base it upon the population.
Yeah, I know that, but I'm saying there's no request.
Yeah.
Ain't that stupid?
Valley Cares in here. Dated November 29th, talks about helping the seniors in Brookline. Requestfully, requests respectfully requests 821 dollars in continued support from the town of Brookline. Such as they service through Meals on Wheels. Sash.
Yeah.
Free services to the Brooklyn community.
Man, that was not my expertise, but that's about 15% increase maybe? Eight 21 and nine 21?
Oh, I thought you said eight 21.
No, eight 21.
No, it's eight 21.
Nine 21?
Eight 21.
Eight 21.
They're passing, they're requesting 821 dollars.
Okay.
821 dollars.
Budget.
Time supportive of that, continuing with that.
I got one for today too. Okay, we can take that back.
Good, we're gonna correspond this way.
Alright, with the board's pleasure, should we move the 821 under the except for town vote for an appropriation for Valley Cares?
Yes.
821. Vermont Centers for Independent Living has requested $80 again this year. It has gone through before. Shall we continue with that?
Okay.
$80. Visiting Nurse and Hospice of Vermont, New Hampshire has increased their request from 1,000 to 1,250 dollars. A change of 250 dollars for this year, as the board's pleasure.
My pleasure is 25% increase. I'm not so happy about that at all. I think a thousand would suit it.
They requested 1,250, which is a 250 dollar increase.
Did they have a letter of explanation or anything related?
I'm guessing.
I don't see a letter, any in. Not in retard anyway.
Well, right, the date, although presumably they must have sent a request.
It's not the today's mail. What's the board's pleasure?
I think, I feel that you can stay the same as it was last.
Me too.
I agree.
Alright, so we have.
Please.
I concur.
Okay, we have, the board consensus is to. To put an appropriation for $1,000.
There you go.
For.
Competitive with that one.
Visiting Nurse and Hospice of Vermont, New Hampshire and to deny their increase of 250 in their appropriation request that will go before the voters. Alright, West River Watershed Alliance, the name's changed in the past. They have requested and again have flat funding of 110 dollar appropriation.
I'm in favor of that.
Okay, 110 dollars. Wyndham County Humane Society.
Yeah. I respect, I mean, you guys.
They haven't requested, I have a problem.
Alright, they have not, I don't see a request.
So that's open.
They haven't requested any?
I don't, you know, maybe she hasn't been older.
So we have a couple open. We have.
We have, I mean, we have also some things here that we haven't.
We have.
So shall we leave that open?
Yeah.
Talk to Samara.
Leland and Gray, we haven't got it, right?
Okay, Wyndham's Freedom Center.
Women's.
Women's Freedom Center. Has requested 640 dollars, which is 140 dollars more than what we offered last year.
Last year we reduced it.
We did not meet their request of 650. So what's the board's pleasure?
Well, they also, if you notice, were given, they requested 650, not a order of 640. And, and we approved 500 last year.
Yeah, but they're also, they're also, the reason we did that, if I recall, is that part of the Women's Freedom Center was also involved with the Morningside Shelter or something else. That's why we, we reduced the amount.
Yeah, I kind of remember that.
I remember exactly what it was, but it was the board's feeling last year that the, between the two agencies, that was sufficient. You know, 500 for the women's.
I remember that, the two being together. I'm not into raising it.
So last year we gave an appropriation of $500. They're requesting an increase of 140 dollars. What's the board's pleasure? Level fund. Level fund for donations for appropriation of 500 dollars. Okay, Youth Services is asking for flat fund, flat appropriation of 255 dollars for the next upcoming year. 255, 255 is fine. There, there's a, should I look? There's probably more. This was an appropriation. Grace Cottage Valley Cares. This looks like one too. This is the. This is our. Appropriation request. Evers F Y Rescue, this is the rescue that we use for that situation this year. Senator Gerson, can we find out what she's asking for appropriations since two, and I'll pass this around. We've worked with local animal control officers in our county and town. They're asking for an appropriation of 100 dollars.
Where's this?
This is for Gerta's F Y Rescue. This is the rescue that we worked with this year for the horse rescue. I know she saved us quite a bit of legal money. Particularly the horse that we didn't have to confiscate.
Well, we're not talking about that.
I would be in favor of that once we get to it.
It appears.
We're at the bottom of our.
It appears as though the open ones, if they're level funded, if I meant, I didn't quite quickly, that they were really close to last year's number.
$100.
We're very close.
Cause we have a 325, but we do.
Right, yeah.
So we have the $100.
She's requesting 100 dollars.
Okay, so we got the $100 like Chris is saying, if you want to give this to.
Well, I think it's a worthwhile cause, plus the animal control officers, they have. Well, they've used it because there's been some horses that were abused in Brookline that hopefully that she got involved with and. It's a small amount to pay for, I think, a good service because there are a number of horses in this town.
And clearly it's benefited our town.
Yes.
Just in that instance, if not.
The ultimate decision is with you guys. I'm just.
Oh, no. Some of this came in, I'm sorry. Alright, so we'll continue on through here. These are new, under new requests. That one was Gerta's. New 2019 request, VACD Fire Hydrant term down fiscal year. That's already.
Yeah, that's the one you did on.
Yeah.
Alright, so then, and SEVCA's, SEVCA's requesting 1,590 dollars again this year.
This is. They want, they.
What is this anyway?
Part of that is Vermont Yankee money, some Vermont.
We have a second SEVCA.
No, it's, it's not actually.
It's F E V.
F E V E D.
Yes. Southeast Vermont Economic Development. It's strange from the Vermont Yankee giving X amount of dollars to the state and they were doling it out to different agencies.
Yes, alright, one you just read was not actually, I think you went.
It's not, it's S E. S E V E D S.
It's South East Vermont S, savings.
Doesn't matter.
Economic.
He's taking notes. I want to make sure he gets it right now.
Oh, it's S small E.
Yeah.
Dorothy, if you've been seeing those, I love that. You've been seeing those emails from Sarah Lang? That's her, right there.
The bottom line is that it didn't, the reason you turned it down last year, it didn't really play on the residents of Brookline.
Because we're not close to the.
This one we said.
We're not in the land.
We're not.
Something.
S E B C A, 465.
You got it. She's.
Alright, I'm sorry, I'm sorry about the confusion. It's just that there are all these, this other one, S E V E D S. Term down in 2018, requested $3 per population unit. They're asking the same amount this year. I guess it's not the today's bill. They're asking for 1,590 dollars.
Not happening.
I have two notes, three notes, four notes. Okay, so deny. Deny.
And the funny thing is.
And we deny the water hydrant.
In Wyndham County that have done that.
They didn't. Right, yes. And the Gerta's F Y Rescue, 100 dollars we approved.
So Gerta is 100?
Correct.
And what did you decide on Senior Solutions? That was a question?
Well, we have gotten.
Alright, we're in a great.
Just very quickly looking at the appropriations list. Green Mountain RSVP, I have, this is denied. And then continuing down, Leland and Gray Education is left open.
Yeah.
Continuing down, Senior Solutions is left open. Continuing down, Project Fee is left open.
For Townsend?
Yeah, I thought it was mine.
And the reason we did that last year, I pretty well took in mind that the Project Fee the Thousands was Rattleboro oriented. Townsend was our area.
That's correct.
So then why did we give $100 to Project Fee that's Rattleboro? It should be the other way around.
We didn't.
We just did. Go back up.
Yeah, we did.
Where?
Oh, I see it.
It should be reversed.
I see that, I see that. That should go to Townsend. That should go to.
So we should deny the Project Fee?
You're right. You're right. You should deny the Project Fee the Thousands and do the other one.
Before we do that. See how it says C note under request? I wonder if it's noted somewhere on their paper request.
Alright, so I suggest then that we leave Project Fee the Thousands open at this time and to confer with Samara.
Alright, so Project Fee the Thousands take the $100.
Senior Solutions, we're leaving that open.
Yes.
Townsend Food Bank, we're leaving that open. We deny the Fire Hydrant Grant.
Yeah.
We have.
I'm sorry. Townsend Food Bank.
Offered $1,000 for the visiting nurses. And we're leaving open the Wyndham Humane Society.
She said 1,000 for visiting nurses, open.
Correct. And deny the hydrant, deny S E V E D S and added Gerta's F Y Rescue.
Right. And Wyndham County Humane Society is open.
Correct, Mark.
What, the 500 dollars for the Humane Society?
There's no request.
Okay.
Unless it's in this file, which, you know.
I don't know, but for some reason I. I'm, I'm, I'm almost sure I've seen these requests come in.
So we're gonna leave it because it's not here. We're not denying it.
Everything goes through, you know, one mail box.
Okay. So. We have to go Samara.
No, they ain't, a snail mail. And maybe, who knows?
Those that are open. Okay, so I'll just do Samara those that are open and we'll have an answer for these for next week, next, next year. Let's not call.
I'm gonna have to. Union at 9:00.
Oh, okay.
Australian wine.
Alright, Mark.
Before we do salaries, I'd like to start off with a couple shots, some whiskey and some beers.
Alright, appropriations is done. Salaries, you can update your budget and then just pretty much be able to tie this up in a few minutes.
Let her add up.
Oh, we're down. What's your. That's not there either.
We're still on A and B. Salaries payable, it's going down.
Yep.
We're on the same page.
Yep.
What, page two was?
So there is a page that we have.
Yes, yes. What page do you want the? Third page, page. Everything else is.
Sorry, which one's calculated?
Hey, town operating expenses.
Okay, select board, town board, treasurer, blah, blah, blah.
I'm nervous.
To be. To be honest with you, I, I, I think that we should have a chance to look at that compensation book before we do salaries. Because there are, there are guidelines or ways that we can decide a lot easier than just trying to like shoot from the hip. That's my opinion.
I think we had a chessboard at the book though.
I, I haven't seen any of that.
Because where, when we. When we looked at the book, it didn't have any amounts in the towns we looked for.
Yeah.
But she sent us the pay rate. You can compare ours to anybody else's she sent us to us.
What is it?
Town of Brookline employee pay rate summary. Here's a copy. You want me to copy, sir?
Right, although, I mean, I'll, I'll, I'll agree with you guys that the part of. Right, although, I mean, I'll agree with you guys that the part of the problem with the compensation booklet stuff is that most, if not all, with the towns of our similar size have that information.
Oh, oh yeah.
And that's what...
But, you can, and this is debatable how ideal this is, you can look at the median salaries for comparable positions and make some approximation based on hours estimates that match up with those median numbers versus the hour estimates that match up with our positions. But it's, there's a lot of, there's too many variables in it. I mean, I was expecting that thing to be helpful in the process. It really isn't helpful.
I mean, I have to be looking at, I have to...
Particularly.
Three positions that I would like to see some changes made on salaries, and the rest look fine with me, I don't know.
Well, I agree with your approach, for one thing, and secondly, has anybody complained? Has anybody asked for increases?
Yes, well, I think one of the things Samara had talked about, looking at the Assistant Treasurer bookkeeper, and looking to increase her salary by fifty cents or so.
I think, yeah, I think what it's been is, we've had people advocate, but we haven't had anyone directly ask for an increase.
Correct. So I'd like to advocate for increasing, and we can discuss not much of an increase for the Assistant Treasurer bookkeeper. She's working, her efficiency is, she gets paid by the hour, but she's extremely efficient and professional, and is getting things done, and so to compensate for that, it was suggested that we look at a rate increase there. Also, our road foreman, we were considering looking at increasing the rate there. And the other third position was the Select Ward Clerk. It's, we're very fortunate right now, Peter, we have sixty dollars. It's not competitive really, when you're looking at, what you can be making elsewhere. And I thought maybe we could add some mileage, offer mileage or something. How many miles, he lives from here?
I call it sixty, round trip.
So I hope you would like to take a look at...
I'd charge the, if there are mileage right now for windshield time, so it's usually two hours to the LNG, up and back.
Well, at fifty-four cents a mile, that's gonna add another additional, you know, a little over thirty dollars to the...
So I don't know if we can look at...
I think essentially with spreadsheet of that.
Yeah. I didn't think you were gonna be here tonight, so...
No, this executive session, otherwise we could talk about it. I put a bag over my head.
No, you were gonna be here today, so, Mark, I called that, so I'd be uncomfortable, but I was looking at maybe, at least some compensation for that. And as I say, road foreman, Assistant Treasurer, and...
Well, I suggest we put it, you know, put it in the worksheet, get everything together, numbers, everything that we're thinking about, let's the matter do it, and get it done. Then we go down and look at the whole thing one more or less time.
Oh, yeah.
And then just, we're gonna adjust some of the things. Yeah, it's important to me that the people that are doing the jobs that deserve the money get it. But to me, that's paramount. What I'm driving at here is when we get to the bottom line, that we can go back and maybe readjust some of the other areas in order to compensate for what we need to do for these people, and try a little fund the budget. That would do it.
Alright, and the other thing, what my contention was when the last pay increase was, it's not just for the people that are working right now, it's going in the future. But we're gonna be able to recruit people because we have a pay scale that is similar. If you're way down the bottom, no one's gonna come look into the job, no one wants to do that. You know, even minimum wage is going up January to ten fifty an hour in State of Vermont. So, you know, you've got to be able to have a structure that's gonna create people that have more than a blood pressure one. You know, that... Well, no, you know, it's becoming far more complex, the jobs are more demanding, you know, and I just want to make sure that people, that, I'm not gonna be here, none of us are gonna be here forever, but going forward, the town has to have the ability.
You're gonna be here for it.
Well, it's way incorrect.
So what I'm hearing from here, and correct me if I'm wrong, is to let Samara plug in the new numbers, take a look at the money that is available.
Is it fair just to do three when we've got...
Oh, no.
We did a lot of raises, right?
I know where you're going with this.
No, I really can't say anything because I am one of the assistants.
Right, no, no, we can't go that route. I know where this town sits, this is one of the reasons why I'm on this board. Because I always felt I had a good idea of how the people think in this town, and they don't want their damn taxes going up anymore, I can tell you that.
Nobody wants their taxes up by the same time.
Are they gonna come in here and take the positions that people don't want to fill because they're not getting paid?
Wait, 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 this pay schedule that I just read, other than the people that deserve it, doesn't seem to be unfair to me. Also, this was done, what, two years ago, that we made this?
Yeah, we did a...
Also, no one has, other than the people that we're talking about, we didn't talk about Louise, did we?
Yeah, we did, Samara came in one night and we said, hold it to later on when we do budget development.
Right, because Louise is a part of this, but those are the only people that, what you mentioned in Louise, are the only people that are doing consideration, we started going all the way across the board. I don't think that's a good idea.
No, no, I don't think going all across, I think being fair with every position, it doesn't matter...
Are we being unfair?
Pardon me?
Are we being unfair with every position?
I think we're pretty fair.
Okay.
I mean, maybe I could maybe get seventy-five dollars an hour, but...
But you're worth a hundred and fifty, so you're a good guy.
No, I mean, to bottom line, that what Mark does is, he has a certain degree of responsibility and expertise that's needed, and it's not an easy job.
You're damn right.
And most people out there in the industry are probably making twenty-five dollars.
That's correct, and I was in favor of going that route, but this budget was gonna crucify me. And rightly so, because it breaks the budget. But he does deserve a raise, because anybody's worked with him, man.
Yeah.
He scares you, he works so hard.
You know, and he's got his badge that works with him, you know, he's invaluable.
He's invaluable. I don't know if anybody can work like that, or if anyone can work like that.
Samara, can we, can we go back to your, the particular situations you're talking about?
Right.
So just to clarify, so in the case of Louise specifically, not all across the board Assistant Treasurers, but just the bookkeeping Assistant Treasurer?
Right, she's making fourteen dollars an hour, uh, was it fifteen dollars an hour?
Fifteen.
Correct.
Right, so, you know, so fifty, fifty cents would be about, as Chris worked out, a little bit over three percent. You know, given her projected hours, that ends up being a difference of two hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Oh, I guess she's...
Based on the budgeted. It does push us over...
It's just for Louise?
The, currently what the adopted budget was from last year, because you have to add in all of these other Assistant Treasurers, so... But it would put us two hundred and twenty-five dollars over that positions line item. I personally think that's something worth strongly considering. Maybe what we do, and we should do this, we should talk through Mark, and we should talk through Peter as well, maybe we come up with what these would be, give that back to Samara, to your point, have Samara plug back in all the other numbers that we've got, as well as those, so we can see what it boils down to over the overall budget, and where it puts us over, under, whatever. Because there's so many gaps in here that I don't think any of us know.
You have no way of talking about?
Though we do know, we're talking two hundred and twenty-five dollars. But, you know, we might already be well over in a whole bunch of other areas that we don't realize, so...
Nothing that's written over.
And what was, what was the recommended amount for Mark?
What were, yeah, what were we thinking?
We're under here.
Because he definitely works hard, always willing to do what we want.
Right, and I will say that one of the things that I could glean from the compensation manual is that to, to your guys' point, you know, I mean, there's not really a road foreman in their analysis, it's a road supervisor. And the, any way you look at it, the lowest median rate that a road supervisor gets paid across the state is twenty-four dollars.
Right.
So, yeah, I mean, I completely agree, and that, I think backs up that, yeah, it would be nice if we could do something to increase them within the constraints we have.
We don't have to dramatically give them a chunk, it could be over a period of time, over a couple of years, give them two...
Yeah, and on some level, it's an acknowledgement of the appreciation for...
That's right, that's right.
And to your point, though, there might not be, and you know, maybe Louise's same way, Peter's definitely not though, but... His opinion, because he is a professional, that guy. You know, we don't, I don't think we want to be in a situation where we are at a point where people are complaining about how they're being compensated, because at that point, we're gonna have a lot of other problems.
That's right.
So hopefully we can do what we can to avoid ever getting to that point.
I have complained about my boss.
Yeah.
We all, we all have, we all have our problems.
While we're, while you're on this, and again with the amount of compensation and so forth, there's one person on here that receives no compensation, and I would like to see that change. Because I think the road commissioner does a lot of work, and it's, again, it's not about who's here today, but who is gonna be here maybe two or three years from now, whatever. A road commissioner has a great deal of responsibility. He's the one that makes sure the projects are done, he's the one that gives the marching orders, and I think there should be some compensation for that. I'm embarrassed, to be honest with you, to see you.
I don't do it for the money.
We know that.
I'm not telling you. Okay, I, I just have, I just have a hard time.
If you will, we haven't completed these pages, and a lot, we're under a lot of...
I'm just expressing my opinion.
I see fourteen thousand dollars that we're under last year.
Thank you.
So, we, no, we get all these... When we get all of a sudden done, we can look at this, straighten this out.
And like I said, if you're not here, who's the next one? You may not have that same opinion.
Alright, so I'm gonna, because we're looking at, passed by nine o'clock, then like, nobody results so well. We will, I'll talk to Samara about plugging in some more numbers. I think right now, we said, we, I'll schedule the agenda additional time for a budget discussion at the next meeting.
So far, we all agree upon the ones that you recommended, we're all wholeheartedly...
We suggest the additional numbers.
Why don't we just wait till we get all the numbers?
Okay.
Right, we are already at a very close as far as...
Yeah, we're doing good.
Okay, I don't want to for a wrench into this.
Oh, geez.
But, no, but while we're on the subject of, not Archie, I want to move off the subject of Archie.
He's getting nervous.
While we're on the subject of compensation, and I, I also think if, I wonder if we should start to consider whether it's now or in the future, some kind of stipend of some kind for our animal control officer.
Right, another one.
That was another person that, I know there's a structure for her to be compensated for mileage and things, but I wonder if we might want to start to think about whether we should have a, it would be a courtesy, not really an approximation of the value or whatever, but like we have with some other appointed positions, we have small stipends, and whether we should be doing that, again, as an acknowledgement and a thank you for...
Yeah, I don't think anybody realized how many phone calls.
Yes, yeah.
For the dogs and that.
Yeah, and he's a little jerk.
We heard about that.
But the thing is, you've got a point, because if you're a loss, Nancy, like the past woman, I forgot her name.
Rachel.
Rachel, we're always in this variable of looking for somebody, and I think this board is interested in becoming the Animal Control Officer. We have somebody that's dedicated, now, you're right, we should, we should push that issue and, and, and talk to, show her in terms of appreciation. So the keeper, she just moved into town less than five years ago, and no one asked her to do the job.
Well, she can...
And she does a good job, both her and Doc do a good job, maybe between the two of them.
She can put in her hourly...
You couldn't have the better chicken, cheese.
She's thirteen dollars an hour.
How much?
Says she's thirteen dollars an hour, she can submit time, a time card.
To be honest, I don't think I ever even realized that.
We don't hold a budget, we, we put that in because one of the concerns, we had a dog issue where she was in custody of a dog for four, eight hours, going from vet to pound, to vet to pound, and so we needed to compensate her.
Or we should hear her budget. What I think we should do is finalize everything else, and revisit this thing again, and see how we can...
See if we have some flexibility, some things, yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Because I, I, I'm speaking for myself, I'm not speaking for anybody else. I know what Archie said when you first started this last meeting, is you wanted to level fund the highway fund. Is everybody on board with that kind of approach with the regular, with the regular budget? We kind of want to level fund from last year, try to keep it the same?
Yeah, we're not trying that.
Okay.
I think right now, what we have not done is count operating expenses, but that's not in part of those on the agenda, and we aren't gonna be able to get it all flowing, so we're gonna move on and try to finish this meeting so that we can drive you the way I think.
Before we move off of the budget, can I just say one thing?
I'll take story for a guy.
The...
Years ago...
WSMD landfill costs. We had had, we had decided to put in five thousand dollars for that, and I'm pretty sure that's gonna be at here.
I was wondering about that.
I think it might be a shade under that, but it's probably gonna be about five thousand.
That's good.
So...
Can I argue?
Thanks, Archie.
Thanks, Archie, see ya.
Don't drive over the yellow lines. I think one more flag is over there. Before we go on to finalize that?
Go ahead.
He's one step away of being like a select ward member. We should consider that when we're talking about all this.
No, that's, that's my opinion too, you guys.
I don't want to know any...
Well, at one time, we used to have, one of the select ward members worked the highway to buy, you know? But with, with Mark, I mean, with Mark and Archie, we're very fortunate, this town is extremely fortunate.
Yes, correct.
He's done a lot for this town.
Spin it back, what would we do if we didn't have him, or what would we do three or four years ago? And not only that, look at the amount, look at the amount that's been done in the last two years. So, Sam Chen.
The grants that we've got.
The grant, the grants, the money he's got, the behavior he's gotten out of it.
Working that out.
Just phenomenal, the amount of work that he's done. I stand above what he's...
There's no doubt that no one likes to pay taxes, but as I've said, time and time again, of our tax structure, eighty-five percent is education, fifteen percent is the municipal side.
I know that, but it really behooves us to show, to show the town that we're trying to balance our budget, trying to, trying to keep everything even. But I think, given what I've seen, I'm hopeful that we can do all this, juggle our...
Well, the last two years, we've had challenges with legal, legal things, and that's gone away. So I think we're in a good, we're in a good place, but it all depends upon our CLA and what our education tax is gonna be right now, our CLA is at ninety-six, and it's going down.
It's going down?
Yeah, so, but there's some talk about, I'll let Marc.
All right, we're gonna move on now, so we're out of the budgetary, so on here, we're down to communications, I can do a break quickly, comments and concerns. First thing, I'm talking to a resident about dumping in town, you may or may not have noticed that there are a lot of tires that are showing up. I am aware of this, and I am meeting with the resident, and we're gonna be taking a tour next Saturday to see where they are being left around, and I will fill you in on more.
Oh, you mean somebody dropped them all over the place?
Yeah.
Oh, sweet.
Yeah, mostly, I'll try. The other question, the other comment that I got, a comment with recycling stickers, there is a resident who's here during the summer season, but, but lets her son and her nephews use the house during off seasons, and the recycling sticker is in her car and not in her son's car, so she doesn't want to be, have her son called in. I think it's fine, it's all right, we'll give a second sticker for a dollar to that resident.
I think we've been, I think we've been giving, not urging for those that are rentals or relatives that are staying at the house, so we've been giving them.
All right, so I'm gonna tell her that.
She can come in and get one, and I just have to write it in the list.
Right, but if she, she lives in Princeton, New Jersey, most of the time, so she might want one mailed, so she can give it, because he may be coming up on the weekend, and you're not available.
And that's the case.
To come in the office, they would be not here.
The son would have to come in the office.
Yeah, so, not, all right, so I'm gonna follow through on that.
Yeah, and I think that's a point, I think we, no, I think people have to, somebody has to physically come to present themselves.
So I can put up the correct paperwork, get the name, where, what house it is and all that.
Okay, I can have.
It's a ball to cumbersome.
All right, the other comments, free cycling in Brookline, still throwing things out there, if you wanted to, I don't know how we're gonna deal with people who are still putting things outside their house.
It's all right, if it's only a couple days, but they leave it there for weeks.
And the other thing was.
At least we're not river ready.
No, yeah. Sand was delivered, I'll check on that, that's just, and then we have now have email, no other emails that we have to discuss, and then, these are the communications that we have, we already covered some of them.
Okay, sounds good.
This was the Sepco, Girdes, Valley Care, Grease Cottage Hospital, we talked about the Vermont Association of Fire Hydrants.
Where she said that.
With the solid waste management contract, a program of understanding. For that shall loan without charge, as is recycling roll-offs, we can use it for residential recycling, hauler may swap and store the recycling roll-offs. The town is responsible for the maintenance of the recycling roll-off, the town will be responsible for the maintenance of the recycling roll-off containers.
Well, it means if the, if the, if parts of the container fall apart or whatever, something needs to be done to repair it, to continue to make it usable, it's up to either us or Triple T to deal with it.
The town will be financially responsible for any damage to the district's recycling roll-off containers caused by the town hauler or by the town. The town will be invoiced for costs to repair or replace the roll-off net, any insurance proceeds, if any, the town will notify the district within five business days from the occurrence of such damage, like if it gets set on fire and stuff.
Exactly.
Should the recycling roll-off container become unusable due to normal wear and tear, the town shall notify the district and their hauler of the situation.
So, we can, not Triple T?
So this, yes, so, so this is the, I mentioned this a couple of months ago, so because we're, because these, the recycling bins and that Triple T has on our behalf are being loaned from the solid waste management district, they have not been given to us.
Right.
They're being loaned to us indefinitely. In order to just codify that, we were gonna have this memorandum of understanding between the solid waste management district and the town. Our, most, well, actually, I should say most, there's only a few towns that have them, because most everybody has given up on their recycling, but other towns have gotten them already, ours hadn't come out because they were trying to find some, to our, which is good, they were trying to find some better bins for us, which they just recently swapped out with Triple T, so that they could indicate the bin numbers on this, because we basically have three bins, and these are the numbers which have essentially been loaned to us. Two of them are always there, one of them Triple T has, and in theory, Triple T swaps out among those three bins. So, yeah, so this is just formalizing all that, I mean, we should review this, and I guess make sure there's no reason that there's something about it that we don't wanna deal with, but, I mean, I think it should probably be fine. So, I guess I would suggest that, is there a deadline, I think it's a deadline, I mean, I can call them and tell them, I mean, that they, I mean, they said they were just getting it out to us, I guess.
They want all the select board signatures on there, right, it looks like?
Yeah, yeah, or, right, for a few. I mean, we don't have to deal with this right now. I guess I'd suggest we should.
Get copies.
Read it over and just make sure there's nothing that seems weird, and assume that we'll execute it at the next meeting.
Okay, so, should I have?
Is that right?
God, those made copies and take it home with you tonight, or, how do you want to review it?
Yeah.
Okay.
I guess we can make, or, we can do it after.
Okay, yeah, okay, we'll make copies, certainly, okay, we'll do that. All right. Next one here, memorandum of rescue, Inc., is asking for the town of Brookline, for a population of 530 people, the assessment is $28.63 a person, for a subtotal amount of $15,173.90. Eleven payments of $1,264.49, and the last payment of $1,264.51.
What was last year?
Did it have last year's? $15,001.
15,654.
15,173.90.
I think it's, sorry, what was the number, one more time?
Oh, I see.
And what was last year, out of curiosity?
14,734.
Well, I'm sorry, the actual.
Well, the actual was 15,654.
And what is it this year?
So this is lower.
So it's less, a little bit.
It's less than the actual.
$450.
So that's from rescue. Southern Vermont Riding Center, that's an appropriation request for serving 21 clients in Southern Vermont. Do you see a, a, a amount? No?
I don't think there was an amount with that, it was just a.
I don't see one.
A request for a donation, and, county tax here, not got that yet either.
Okay, there also, a letter from Vermont Land Trust.
Right, that's a.
They are assisting in the donation of 63 acres of land east of Rasson Brook Road.
That's the bankruptcy I'm working with.
Okay, copy of the grant is available on request, but they're not requesting.
Yeah, I, I, I think on that, I put select board and then town clerk after that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, I'll give this to Nancy, Animal Safety and Precautions, and earn your ESM degree on your own time, anyone wants to go to Columbia and Southern University, become an AMT. Solar City, there's another one here from Solar City, hold on.
Yeah, it doesn't seem.
Okay, we at Solar City Tesla Energy have recently expanded our product offerings and are aware that you may have in the past not required permitting and/or inspection of our projects, we would therefore appreciate if you could identify which of our product offerings you would and would not require permitting and inspections, see page two. Your signature is also required to validate your response, we would also greatly appreciate any documentation from your local code that can support your responses, both information and testings. So they're looking at, do they require a permit to do solar installations, solar energy storage units, energy storage only, electric vehicle outlets, or receptacles, or roofing projects, do we have any permits or inspections required for this to happen in Brookline?
No.
We have no zoning, so consequently, there is no permitting or anything of that nature, but I'm gonna just maybe warn you that before you sign anything of that nature, anything else, you might want to really think about that, and maybe that might be something for the.
Or the town plan.
Well, not only the town plan, but also for an attorney to take a look at, because that has a lot of connotations to it, you know.
Why we need to respond to it?
Well, you don't have to. The bottom line is you don't have to, because she called me up, and I said, you need to send the select board a letter and see if, you know, if they want, if they wish to act on it, you know.
But that's basically it for our.
Well, it's for solar power, it's for solar farms, it's for solar, you know, solar collecting and so forth. It's a, it's a very dangerous thing if you sign something that, before you know it, you got a field of solar plants, you know. Because we have no zoning, but in our town plan, is there some sort of language for solar collectors? I thought there was a section that.
I think there's something in there.
Yeah.
Well, we can bring them next week, when we come in on Tuesday or Wednesday. We also got the VLCT newsletter, which.
That's important, because it has a lot of town meeting information in there, you know, town meeting is only, the warning is just another month away.
That's right.
Yeah.
And then the car tree estimate is also came in the mail today.
And just to refresh my memory, you, you signed, you agreed to a nine o'clock start for town meeting, okay?
Yes.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, so that was our regular mail, email on community, C-section. Right now, we're doing pay orders and some agenda. The payroll warrant, I've already signed, you don't need to sign it, but I'll pass it around for you to take a look at. I signed it last, last Wednesday, it was the.
What is this one, that one?
Well, yeah, but then the cover letter is from Marlboro.
That's why you have to see that. Yes, yes, yes. What do you need to sign up?
Okay, and then here's your town's payroll coming around. I'd like to make a motion to accept payroll warrant, 2018-22, dated November 29th, 2017, in the amount of $1,584.56. Can I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by date, any discussion? All those in favor of accepting payroll warrant, 2018-22, in the amount of $1,584.56, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
opposed, payroll warrant is accepted. You'll notice in there, the 50% deposit for the engineer report, where the.
Yeah, I was gonna ask you.
Action is.
What are they doing here?
Well, they're waiting for their.
Money?
They're waiting for the deposit, which is, we're signing all on now.
Okay.
So I'll start making the agenda items that we have there.
See your school taxes there?
Yeah, I'm noticing it.
Yeah.
That's just a quarter.
I'm anxious to see how much money, if we got any money left over. It's left over, and we get it.
We can come and say happy holidays and. Bruce went to see Chris Hayes and Rachel.
I don't like her. I like her, so, I recorded three of them.
All right, ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to make a motion to accept payroll, uh, town's payroll warrant, 2018-21, dated November, dated December 6th, in the amount of $304,455.35. Can I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Chris, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor of accepting a town's payroll warrant, 2018-21, for $304,455.35, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, ask, good, and now we're down to agendas, so. Give me a quick.
Budget.
Budget.
Reject everybody else.
Yeah.
Yeah, I like that.
Budget and nothing else.
Budget.
And as little as you can fight off everybody else.
Limited, okay.
Yeah, it's gonna be a couple of days before the Christmas, and they want to talk about the freaking town plan, and do January.
Is that a budget thing?
We gotta get the budget down.
It's not a budget thing, but.
Oh, contract, we didn't talk about a contract. We didn't talk about the waste management district.
Yeah, right.
And I guess, anything else that comes up, I'll take a very brief. All right, so at this time, I will entertain a motion.
You have a motion to go bye-bye.
Go bye-bye, by Bruce, seconded by.
Bye-bye.
By Chris. Well, a discussion, all those in favor of adjourned at this meeting, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
And the meeting is over at 9:41.